Hi, Mayor.
Hi. Did everybody have lunch?
Oh, yeah, it's kinda. How are you looking?
I'm gonna turn my phone off.
I think the kids should grant. Oh, yeah. My grandparents are.
We had a request from Paul Philippi. Dawn Leighton, who's here with us, wanted to do a presentation on some increased funding needs for their transportation.
And where do we currently pay that from?
That is, it's in edit.
Okay.
Okay, well, good afternoon, and thanks for allowing me to come and talk to you guys. I appreciate it. I know I did come to you late in the season last year and talked about like budget issues that we were having at Paul Philippi with our transportation program. And I do know that the mayor actually like helped us obtain some opioid funds for this year, so we did like receive like about $28,000 from that grant process. So that took us up to like around $48,000 for the year, which was great. So that was great, but still not enough. So that's why I'm here. I thought I'd give like a little bit of a history for you people that didn't know how public transportation kinda came into Clinton County. That was something that started way back in like 2004. So they did a feasibility study, and that was like supported by the city council and the county council, so it was kind of like a joint effort for both entities coming together. So they did a feasibility study, saw that we needed public transportation in our community, and so that's kind of how it all began. Part of that agreement was that like the city and the county both agreed to support us like with local match, which is what we have to have for our federal funds that come in. We have to have, half of our entire budget has to come in from local funds. So that's kind of the history there. I will tell you that in 2005, like our total budget was $2,000 and $19,000. Going into 2026, our budget is $895,000. So that kinda shows you like over time, like how we've increased and how we've been able to obtain more federal dollars as time goes on. Back in 2005, our first year, we did 3,609 trips. We had four vehicles. Going into 2026, we have 13 vehicles. We have another vehicle that we have ordered that's on the way coming to us. So we'll increase our fleet up to 14 vehicles. And I think last year, we did 35,915 trips. So that's kind of a huge increase that you can see over time that has happened. Back in the beginning, we got $15,000 from the county and $20,000 from the city. Honestly, until this year, those numbers have never increased. We have never come to the city or the county and asked for an increase to our local match dollars, but we're at a very critical stage in the game right now. One of the reasons why we're struggling with our local match is we used to have like contracts with like nursing homes and ASI and the Y, like we transported their kids back and forth like on a daily basis. And kinda what happened over time was that they all kinda saw like how much money they were spending like in those contracts, and so then they decided to purchase their own vehicles, go out and try to provide that service themselves and save their money. So that kinda affected our local match dollar line. The only other monies that we get for local match, other than the city and the county, are Medicaid dollars, our fare box, like so whatever people donate in our fare box, as well as the contract that we have with like the individual parents like for to transport their kids to and from school, we count that as local match because that's kind of like even though it's like a contract with a parent, it's still a contract. So that's where we get like all of our local match from. We also get some area $4, like around $13,000. So that's kinda where we get all of our money from. We're just, we're in that situation where it's just, locally, it's just not enough. Like we have to, we have to be better. We changed like our service hours this year. Like we started operating now from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so we used to be 8:00 to 4:00. So we've added on that extra hour in the morning and that extra hour at night, which has increased like a lot of transportation to and from work. We're also getting a lot more of those early morning trips that people need to go like to medical facilities, like especially out of town, like if you gotta be at, you know, Lafayette for a 7:00 AM surgery, like that helped us enable those people to do that. So we're doing a lot of that kinda stuff. One of the things that really hurt us in this community was like losing dialysis, like that, like not having a dialysis center here in Clinton County has really affected our transportation program because now we're taking like large numbers of people to Lebanon and Lafayette to receive dialysis, and you know, that's consistent. So that's a lot of wear and tear on our vehicles, a lot of, you know, just, you know, drivers that are working more out of town than in-town kinda things. So just all those reasons behind all that. Another big thing that has happened to us this year is that we have been designated through NDOT to be a pilot program for becoming regionalization. I don't know if you guys have kind of followed what's going on like with public transportation across the state, but they're kinda moving towards like a regionalized program and like having hubs in certain counties that encompass other county counties. And so we were chosen as a pilot program for that. So we started that this year. We took on Tipton County, which is a bordering county. So we're working with them right now. We've gone through our second quarterly report, and we are still alive, so that's like really good news. There's lots of challenges that go along with that, and one of the questions that you keep asking me is, well, if we become like this regionalization hub, like does that mean our dollars are going to Tipton or are our dollars going to Montgomery County? Because those are like, we're picking at Montgomery County next year. We're also being proposed White County and Boone County. So there, it's, it would be a big responsibility for us to have all those counties like come under us. But, but no, like all of our money stays local, like we're not giving any money to them, like they, they do their own local match, they do their own fundraising, they do all the things that they need to do to receive their monies. We just write the grant for them, and then we kind of oversee their program, like we kinda become like a compliance officer for them. We're making sure that they're doing all their drug and alcohol testing properly and that they're doing all the trainings that their drivers have to go through. So those are the kinda things that we're doing for Tipton this year, Montgomery next year, and potentially Boone County the year after that. So with that, we did receive a little bit of extra money from NDOT. We got enough money to hire a full-time dispatcher, as well as we hired a part-time compliance officer. So that's someone that can help me take some of that pressure off of me to be the one that has to do all those things in general. So for us being a regionalization hub, if that continues to like bring us more money, that's a good thing. If that means we can hire more drivers, hire more people, you know, those kinda things. But then it's also kind of a catch-22 because then we have to have more local match to, you know, take on that extra money and responsibilities that we get. Let's see, what else can I tell you guys? So we're asking for quite a large increase. We're asking the city to come up with like $100,000, and we're asking the county to come up with $75,000. Like I said, I know that's a huge, like big jump in like our request, but then also remember that for the last 20 years, we haven't asked you for any additional money. We probably should have been coming in and asking for like an additional $5,000 every year, but we also kinda prided ourselves on the fact that we were able to like come up with local match, like through other means, and we worked really hard to like save the city and the county money in that aspect. So that's where we're at with stuff. I did put on your thing also that just the trips from 2024, like of those, let's see, what was it? 35,915 trips that we took, 33,502 came within the city limits. So those are people that got on our bus and rode, whether they stayed in Clinton County or whether they went to Boone County or Lafayette or whatever, 33,000 of those trips came from the city, and then like 2,413 came from the county. So there's a big responsibility like for the city, like a lot of the people that we transport here are coming from right here, within the city limits. What else can I tell you guys? Is there other things that you guys wanna know from us? I know that one of the questions that the mayor and I have discussed several times is that one of the requests that we get a lot of times from people in the city, in the county, I guess you would say, is that they approach the mayor about like, well, what can we do a fixed route system? Could we do like where we pick people up and we take them to Walmart, and we take them, you know, to the drugstore, and we do those kinda things? And that is not something that we're opposed to looking at into the future, and that might be something that we could maybe create with this regionalized transportation and being able to receive more funds. But then again, it's a huge commitment on everyone's part. Like I would love to be able to provide that service in our county, but it's, that's an expensive service. I mean, you're running a vehicle, you know, that entire time that you're open, so.
Dawn, do you take people out of town to work, or is it primarily just medical?
We do take some people out of work. We do take one person to SIA, which is a weird request. We take people to NHK, but most of the requests that we get for work are like people that need to go to work at Goodwill, or people that need to work at Taco Bell, or people that need to work at Burger King, you know, those kinda things, mostly, mostly like right here within the county. But when we opened up that, that going later in the day, we picked up a bunch of NHK people. So we're also, we, one of the things that we added this year as well is we are now going to Tipton because they have a counseling center, so we're taking a lot of people there for mental health services as well. And that's kind of a new thing that we just started honestly like two months ago, because we were getting so many requests and we were denying them, so now we're like, okay, we'll go to Tipton, we can do that, that's not terribly far, so. Does anybody else have questions? I know it's a big ask, but you know, and I know like with Senate Bill 1, there's like a lot of uncertainty and things that are coming down, but I also feel like the public transportation is a priority. And I mean, you think about 33,000 trips, like what could we do if we continue to grow? Like those are people in our community that really need this service. A lot of people can't get to and from those doctor's appointments without us, or to the grocery store, or to, you know, Walmart.
So at what point in time do you have an official trip charge?
You mean like what do we charge?
Well, I mean, so right now, it's.
It's donation-based, yes.
So would it take the fixed route before you actually have a fixed charge?
I think that we would have to look at that. I probably would still wanna operate under a donation basis. When you look at like our fare box numbers across the state, we actually have a pretty good fare box collection, and I attribute that to like that there are some people in this community that can afford to donate well, and there's some people in this community that cannot afford to donate at all. And so I think that if we started creating like a fare box system where we said, okay, it's, it's a dollar to ride, we, honestly, we would lose probably 30% of the people that ride on our transportation program. We, we transport a lot of very, very low-income individuals. Good question. Anyone else have?
The one at SIA and the one at NHK, do they pay anything?
They do donate, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did, just so you guys know, like because we're kind of really struggling like this year, like we just don't have enough local match coming in, so we just sent out letters to every single rider on our vehicle that told them like, you know, without your donation, like we can't continue to provide this service for a donation basis. And I would say we have about an 11% increase in our donations like over the last three months since we sent out that letter. So that's a huge, you know, we'll continue to keep doing that. And some people come in and complain to me about it, you know, like I can't afford to do it, and you know, but I'm also like, but we take you to go pick up cigarettes, so like you can afford cigarettes, but you can't afford to like give us a dollar for our fare box. So, you know, not that we, you know, we don't like discriminate on who we transport, we take anyone of any age and that kinda stuff, but it's just interesting to me like how you have money for the things that you categorize as more important than others.
Did you say what your fare box total was for 2024?
For 2024, I think we were around $18,000.
And that's separate from the local match?
Yes, and we have to record that separately like through NDOT. So when we write our grant, we have like our budget, then we have like our local match, and then we have to count that fare box income as a separate entity, and it comes off of our total. So it's really not considered local match. It is, but it isn't, if that makes sense.
So if you did charge like $5, would that would not go toward your local match then?
It would not. It would come off of our total that NDOT sends us. Yeah, it's kind of a weird, it's a weird formula. Okay. Well, thanks for the opportunity to come and talk to you guys. If you guys have any questions, feel free to email me. I also gave you like a trip sheet on the back of your flyer that just kinda shows you guys where we've kinda been like since 2021, just the, the amount of increases we've had since then. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, so that transportation of Clinton County is in edit. And I will say I must have misunderstood because I thought they said 65,000, and now she said 100, so I'm not, I had put 65,000 in the budget, but.
Page 17.
Page 17.
I think that's gonna come under our end of session discussion.
Yeah, I do too.
Everybody basically wants another 80 on top of 20, maybe.
Yeah, and I thought it was, I thought it was a total of 65 she'd asked me about, but I must have misunderstood or something, but anyway. Okay, let's see, what do we have next? Brian Kilman, MVH Local Riden Street and Sanitation.
Oh, you have them for him? I have some for him, too.
Oh.
Either one.
Extra spin.
Either one. So you're looking at the same.
Just make sure we're, yeah, the same ones. What page are we on here?
MVH is page 11.
11.
11. So in the 100s, we really have not decided, Brian, anything on salaries or that type thing? But did you have any position changes or? Okay.
Earlier in the year, we took out the operator mechanic, and then I have two foremans now.
Yeah, because I see you have the, you took that out, and then you have the two foremans, so.
And then the labor special events spot fell off too.
The labor.
Labor special events.
Let's see, do we? We don't have any, oh, you took it out, okay.
That was me.
Yeah, that was him.
Okay. And this new amount, amount for the foremans is correct, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Other than that, as far as like your perp, they'll have to figure that once we decide on the wages. Longevity, I'm gonna guess, you check that, that's correct. FICA is the same thing, we'll have to wait and see what we do with the salaries. And nothing else then in the 100s, correct? Okay, if you wanna go ahead and start down through your budget and.
We didn't touch anything except for 361, the building repairs and maintenance and MVH, we raised that five grand.
Okay.
With that one, we have a scan tool that even the fire department comes through and uses, and it's $6,500 right off the rip every year. Then we have another scan tool, it's $1,300. Then we're also looking at the ADA upgrades and all that with our building, and we have several, so.
Yeah, the, the thing, and I guess we haven't discussed that, is there are gonna be several upgrades within each department, but we have like 20 years to make all these changes. All they wanna see is that we're working on making changes. So Board of Works is gonna meet with Dawn and Tim and see how we move forward on that, how many we're gonna do every year, the cost, so.
What new building or professional services are you needing for the 10 grand there?
We use BFNS to do our Paser rating. That's $9,800, and then they're also helping me with paving this year with CCMG.
Did that come out of another fund previously?
I don't believe so.
It shows new on my copy here.
It is new. Well, you just put it in your budget, we, we're not sure how that was paid in the past. I was trying to think, it must have been, we must have paid it.
I think we just figured it out when, when we had to pay it.
It's every two years for Paser.
So last year, this year, we wouldn't have had it, and the year before, I'm gonna guess, maybe it got paid out of Board of Works or some other professional.
And then with the issues we had with CCMG this year, we decided to contract through BFNS to get those numbers.
So what does BFNS do for you?
As far as the Paser rating?
Okay, so they actually conduct the.
Yes, they come through town, and they come through and rate every road in town. And that's how we decide what roads to put into our CCMG.
I didn't realize that was conducted by a third party.
Correct. And then with CCMG, I send them a list of roads, they come in, they check those roads, and tell me what it should cost to repair that road. And then that's how I, with our budget, we choose what roads to put into CCMG for the year for paving.
We've used them in the past, we just did not have that line item.
Correct.
And only certain roads qualify for CCMG, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's what the Paser rating does, is it identifies the qualified roads?
Correct.
Does anybody have any other questions on that? Go on to page 12. We have Local Riden Street, and then we also have the MVH restricted.
Yeah, starting with that one, supplies, line 211, that's our sign-related budget. Anything with truck supplies as well has come out of there, but with signs, we've been trying to upgrade all of our stop signs and our no-parkings and three-hour parking signs downtown. Our budget's been taking a hit quite a bit lately. The amount of stop signs we have around town that are faded is crazy, so.
So you raised that total amount?
2,000.
And your, and your 200s of $19,000 for all those different things?
Correct.
Like ice salt, street repair, line striping.
So in supplies, right now, you have 30% left? In salt, you have 11%. Street repair, 48%, and MVH repair parts, 31%.
I think we used extra out of that, didn't we? Didn't we get into the cash a little bit this year, or one year in Local Riden Street?
Yeah, it's projected to this year as well. Big thing with salt, we took a big hit with salt last year. We're way under on salt, and then alleys, we're trying to get our alleys back to standard, especially now that our trucks aren't in it, so we need more stone and stuff like that.
Do we, do you think we need to make adjustments on that, or do you think we can sustain that?
How much is Josh bringing in?
LRS? I mean, just, it could literally be one more year.
We could go one more year.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be, it'd be tight in as well. I mean, and then the following year, you're gonna be obviously limited to the revenues, which they fluctuate drastically, so we'd never be decreasing next year of the requested budget, because revenues are just over 100, as you can see, but just over 126,000, so have much to work with next year outside of the revenues that are coming in that year.
And we're actually putting a couple of MVH things in there, aren't we, to help MVH? Do we have any questions on that, or any adjustments? Okay, then we have next MVH restricted, and that is our paving budget. Which we do have a deficit in the spending, but we would have a cash balance at the end of the year if we did the 450. I didn't know if you wanted to stay with the 450, do you wanna lower it? Do you wanna stick with the 450 and?
I mean, we've used the philosophy that building materials only get more expensive, so to that philosophy, do as much paving as you can while you got the money. If it runs out later, then.
Well, the other thing is too, is we don't know how long CCMG is gonna last, so we might as well.
We have to do CCMG by October.
This year.
This year, this year for next year, so we have to know what we have to spend because he needs to get that application in soon.
By October 31st. It has to be submitted.
Do you plan on getting another grant or try to get another grant next year for cover half?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
That'll give us, what, 900?
900.
Yeah. Yeah. If you get that other grant, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody have anything else on that?
I kinda agree with Eric, I mean, spend it on the road now in case we don't have it next.
I mean, we have 66,863, they'd say, a year in cash, you know, next year after that. So I mean, we, even if we get into the cash a little bit, it looks like we're still gonna be sufficient, so. Do you wanna go on to sanitation then? Page 13.
The only thing I looked at in sanitation was line 232 and 359 repair parts and repairs. We have a truck that is just a pain. It's our used side loader. We've already, we've already put about 20 grand in repairs this year alone already.
Now, that used, the used side loader that we got, and it's been, yes, it's been costly, hasn't it?
Is that a backup vehicle, or?
Yeah. We use it on Tuesdays and Thursdays because those are our biggest routes, and then if one of the other ones goes down, it goes in. Which happens.
Do we have enough in trash dump fees? We are already at 205 through six months.
No. Every year, we're coming back and asking for.
Where are we in trash?
Dump fees. To be honest, I've added everything up. It's about $440,000 a year between whamplers, the landfill, and our recycling costs, so.
How much?
About $440,000. That's off, based off this year's numbers.
I mean, you know, we would be in a deficit for the budget purposes, but it looks like there's a projected cash balance at the end of the year. I mean, if you wanna up that, the dump fees, what we did on health insurance, I just did a 5% increase on that, and then dump fees, we went up 25,000.
So the only real reason to hold cash in the sanitation fund is like a catastrophic failure of a truck, I'm gonna guess, right?
We could always.
Otherwise, it should be really money in, money out, since it's a fee, not a tax levy.
Right.
So I think we ought to up that dump fee, save ourselves an additional appropriation.
Yeah.
Yep, get into that cash.
What, what do you wanna raise that to?
What'd you say, 440 was?
440 is what we're on track this year. Obviously, next year, everybody's gonna raise, landfill will raise, whamplers will raise.
They don't raise their rates, do they?
No, no.
Part of the reason I say that is that also helps us have a more accurate picture when we have to raise the fees. You know, you don't really, you really talk about raising fees when you're sitting on almost a half a million.
I know, that's the thing. And like you said, what, what reason would we wanna set on that?
There is no reason.
That's separate, and it's, it's a specific use, so we're not relying on those funds to transfer anywhere else. May as well beat this one up a little bit.
Go for it.
And then if we have to do additionals for like repairs or things like that, we'd still have backup because there's 497,000, you know, projected.
How much, how much do they normally raise each year, do you know, at average?
Couldn't say that one, do you know? Couldn't say that one. Do you know? Might have to look.
Just, is that negotiable at all? Do we negotiate any contracts with?
I don't believe so.
Whoever it is.
No, they usually tell us that their fees are going up, right? I mean, that's.
Because where else are we going to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, we're raising our fees this year.
We've got some extra ground, don't we?
So, you thinking four fifty?
That's what I was thinking.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
I hate to do it, but.
Yeah.
And it just saves us from coming back and asking at the end of the year.
Yeah, for an additional.
Better to do it now, or, I mean, better to do it done.
Okay, let's make that four fifty.
Well, I don't have to worry about it.
So another seventy-five thousand.
That's another hundred. Another seventy-five other ways.
And then health insurance, we made that slight increase, and then you also have repairs that you increased by thousands, so.
Right, the only thing I'd ask on that is, when we went to the automated trash service, there was an indication that through attrition, we would be able to drop almost three, three people on a truck down to one or two.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any efficiency gained in labor?
Absolutely.
So where, where have the, where's that manpower went? Has it been transferred?
Um, alleys, right now. So like typically, we send three guys out for alleys to grade them, drag them, roll them, and then once those guys get done, then they start, months later, they start coming back with a dump truck and a loader to put stone in alleys. Now, we're running both simultaneously, and we've got guys mowing daily. That always just happened whenever we had time, so we've got two guys that can go out and get all the city lots mowed and all that stuff. But manpower is actually, we're actually more efficient now.
Does that probably help with leaf pickup and?
Oh, yeah.
And brush?
Mm-hmm. Yep, brush is getting picked up more.
By those side loaders, there's only one person on them.
Correct.
I mean, that saves a lot.
Yeah. One in a truck.
You don't have to worry about one on the back getting hit.
Or the Wednesday recycling is still picked up by hand?
Correct. Nine guys, right off the rip.
Does anybody have any other questions?
So, I just have one quick question. So it's just four, roughly four thousand, I guess, of your pay allocated to sanitation?
Yeah.
Do you know how much like breakdown wise? Because I'm, I'm just wondering, trying to think of ways that, you know, if you guys do end up increasing some rates, which I do want to show you guys, inside the front cover, there's a two pager that says, and it shows the current rate structure, obviously the budget that you're tied to, previous to the company's, that we're increasing. But then the second page, what we did, talking about, showing a two dollar rate increase on two thousand years, one hundred and six, four twenty-eight, and twenty thirty, and it shows you how much you, you know, that generates. So twenty twenty-six, just to the right of the green line, and you can see the circle, obviously, that, this would be if we were to raise to twenty-six, but.
Brian?
That's closer to a hundred and four thousand. It wouldn't be there, because a lot of it will be taken up from that dump fee increase, and it's still. But then, obviously, MVH is one where there is a deficit in it right now. We're allocating a lot more of his salary in MVH versus sanitation, but it could be something where we could shift more of his salary, maybe it's more fifty-fifty. That's why I was just asking how much of your time between MVH versus sanitation was, I mean, the overall budget, my look at the number of sanitation, more than MVH.
Correct.
We're only allocating four grand, but it could be something where if you guys do increase your rates, you can shift more of his salary over to sanitation, just an option. Because other than that, there's, I mean, that is something rates-wise that you guys can control, but what we can move over there is pretty limited, so just an option if you guys do explore, you know, increasing, you know.
I mean, is that something we should look at now?
I, I, it's going to be, it's going to be something you're going to have to look at very soon, especially if the, you know.
What's MVH?
Need to grow.
What, what do you think about?
Because right now, you will have to do something with MVH, whether or not you potentially move part of his salary into sanitation. If not, I mean, LRS is, I mean, it's pretty limited, so if you don't cut anything or move anything, the DLGF, I mean, they're going to end up cutting your budget, so your only alternative would be to shift property taxes away from general on MVH. So I'm just trying to think of ways to.
What do you think about?
To do.
Well, and I think it's just like, so I'm assuming that a bigger proportion of your time is to this than, than that, that amount.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
It's justified theoretically. I don't like to.
I mean, I, that's why I just asked the question. I'm just looking at numbers, and I, I just see that the overall budget for sanitation is higher, and then I just saw that there was just four grand up there.
Would we want to do fifty-fifty?
I don't know why not.
It guarantees you're raising your rate next year, though.
Mm-hmm.
You'd have to.
It justifies the, the rate, and it, and it more closely matches. Remember County 101 matching?
Yeah, I mean, worst case, I mean, you could get free one more year, but probably not that. Because, I mean, we just, we just added how much there, seventy-five or seventy-five thousand in dump fees, and hypothetically, say we shift another, you know, forty grand over there, that's a hundred and fifteen thousand. We would still have, you know, some cash in there, but obviously, that's going to continue, and the dump fees, you know, continue to increase. So if not twenty-six, I mean, I'd have to mildly consider.
But I think it's reasonable that, you know, even if we would talk about a line item, can you put a depreciation line item? I mean, how do, how are we saving for a garbage truck, just through the capital expenditures, and just put it in there when we need it? I'm, I'm trying to think, you know, how, how do you plan for, how do you put a hundred grand in every year to pay for a four hundred thousand dollar truck when you need it?
You would just have to have that cash at the end of the year to build up. You, you can't, you couldn't put it in a separate fund, but you could just say, we're going to like, let's take sanitation, you're already deficit thirty thousand, well, you'd be a hundred thousand.
We just need to note that our end, your ending cash has to be maintained at a certain level.
Right.
To buy the next truck.
Right.
Just curious, what is the capital improvement plan for, what, I, I take it this backup truck's good for a few more years, and then we're looking at something?
Yeah, I've got numbers now. It's right around three hundred and forty thousand for new trade.
Okay, so that's, after we make those changes, if we move half the salary over, that's going to be everything that's left, so. So that's the next thing to talk about, is that trash fee increase.
So what do you think for, for twenty twenty-six? Do we want to do fifty-fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what those figures are for each one of them. Whatever, that ends up fifty-fifty. Yeah, because, I mean, four thousand isn't anything out of sanitation. I mean, that's... Do you guys have that figure?
Almost there.
Oh, but shoot, that's, that's with a proposed increase, isn't it? Our MVH levy? Probably where we want it, right? Because we'd have to take away from something else to.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned this, because otherwise, I mean, MVH is, I mean, budget's pretty tight.
Yeah.
It's, a lot of it is personal services, so your alternative to that is to shift levy over there, it's just going to.
Yeah, and then that take away from general, so.
Based off three percent increase.
Uh-huh.
Proportionate with the rest of that budget book, it'd be forty-two, eight, twenty-seven in each fund.
So that helps MVH. Sanitation a little bit, but sanitation's okay right now. Just if we plan ahead. Is everyone comfortable with that change? It's, to me, that would make the most sense.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know about that yet, but that would just, what we're doing is dividing that salary out, so that more of it is taken out of sanitation, because if you look here on the budget summary, there is a projected year in cash, so.
You're talking about the front summary?
Yeah.
You know, the salary, salary you're talking about is.
So we would take forty.
Your personal services?
At a three percent, that would be forty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven out of each one of the funds. But depending on what we do with that, it could vary a little bit.
So that position was given a raise a couple of years ago, I believe, and we, we, it was decided that sanitation could handle the additional four thousand dollars better. That's why it got split in the first place. Just a little background.
Is everybody okay with that? Any other questions on that? Not, then, also, we have any other things?
For the.
You have the SS4A match?
Mm-hmm, fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, and then hot box, four-ton capacity. Is that right? Forty-four thousand? Is that what?
I'm working with RDC on that one, though, so that might be taken care of.
What's SS4A?
SS4A, that's Safer Streets For All Grant that we received.
What's that do?
They gave us a whole comprehensive plan for the, well, not really comprehensive plan, but it's to reduce fatalities and accidents with vehicles and pedestrians for the entire city, infrastructure-wise.
Is that something yet to be conducted?
Yes, we're in the process of hiring a contractor now. We've already been approved through, through.
How much is the grant for?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred?
Mm-hmm.
And we have to?
Our, our part is fifty.
Yeah. That's something that was started back.
About a year ago.
Probably July last year.
Yeah.
Was that as a result of some injury, or, I mean, what, what was the impetus for that?
Do you remember why? It was not an injury. I don't remember. I don't know how that came about, that.
I don't know.
Jason, Jason, I think, Jason name.
Yeah.
Kimberly worked on it.
I think Jason and Kimberly just found out about it through some resources that they both have, and decided it would be very beneficial for our community. So they started the process, but before it became very far along, Brian was involved. So Brian's been instrumental in it since almost the beginning, and Kimberly, the two of them together.
It's like a full plan. Where to add sidewalks, where to add bike lanes, where to upgrade infrastructure.
Did you say you've been before the RDC on the hot box?
No.
Or you're, you're going to?
Yeah. I've spoken to Joe, but.
What's that?
For the hot box.
What is?
A patcher, our patcher, yeah, for potholes.
Does anybody have anything else on that, or any questions for Brian?
I'd only comment that these grants for things like SS4A, I think those are the kind of things that really council ought to be given a presentation on, you know, see if, get, get buy-in from all of those, or it's just a budgeted item.
Did they, did?
There was a presentation on it last fall.
Last fall?
Mm-hmm.
I, I thought Jason did talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, he came, it was, it was on an agenda. It was an agenda item.
Yeah. I don't remember exactly when that was, but he brought it, I'm pretty sure, to say it was something that we were interested in doing, and, and the funding for it, knowing that it would be a match. I mean.
I only bring that up because I worry about spending that kind of money on a plan, and then having those tasks be unfunded.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, I guess we would have to, to do that. Do you know what I mean? Just not, not, not take advantage of it.
I don't know how far along we're in the process, but if a push comes to shove, I think those are the kind of things we got to start thinking about, again, with our shortfall. Do we have a lot of time invested in that grant application?
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else?
Next.
Next?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you. Let's see, who do we have next? Is the judge coming?
He might be late. He, he was out of town, and I told him just to keep in touch with me, and we could slot him in, since the rest of the day is more flexible.
Does anybody want to do mine? Mine's easy. Mayor's budget. The only thing I see is the salary increases, and we increased our part-time and overtime budget. We have somebody come in, work part-time, when Andrea is out of the office, and then she has a few overtime hours. That's another one we have. Everybody good with that, or? Change it? Yeah, okay. You guys are easy. Do you want to do the council one, or yes, no? I figure what we can get done just shortens the day, as soon as I find counsel.
The council budget's at the bottom of page two.
Page two.
It's a very large budget.
Oh, yeah, that's why I couldn't find it.
You might not be able to find it. You might not be able to find it.
So, it looks like that the only change on that was the salary increase of 3%.
Yeah, do we want to make a, a show of, of a solidarity kind of thing, that, that we decline an, an increase? I mean, a...
All elected officials?
Wait a minute.
We're speaking for the council. We're speaking for the council.
You guys got a raise last year.
Don't, don't forget to use your mics.
The, the other side of that is I also feel like we are paid less than the county council, and I've always felt like that should be more in, in line, but given where we are this year, I thought that might be a, an interesting way for us to...
And didn't we increase yours more than the percentage last year?
Last year, we didn't do percentages, we did amounts.
Yes, that's right, and you guys got, yeah.
Got a pretty good bump last year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Like I said, I, I'm, I'm not thrilled about it because I really feel like the, the effort we make is commensurate to that of the county, but at the same time...
If we do a two, if we do a 3%, it's 2,241. So, if we do a 1%, look what that would be, so...
Seven hundred, yeah.
I think maybe there's going to be a little bit bigger discussion that, you know, maybe we have to wrap boards and, and part-timers into some kind of a reduced amount, you know? I think when we get to the final discussion on what raises can or can't be, then I'd have no problem following Steve's lead, lumping us into the group of, you know, if you have to kill part-timer increases and things like that.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I do think our part-time rates are pretty good right now.
It's, it's a range of sixteen to nineteen, and they typically don't get a raise if, once they get to the top end of that scale. In the past, the scale was, for the past few years, prior to that change, it was like fifteen, fifteen, fifty, and sixteen. So, once they maxed out at sixteen, they didn't get raises.
If they're on a part-time, full-time basis, they do.
Part-time, full-time, yes.
What, like, if they work four hours a day, and they're a part-time, full-time person, they would get that four hours. That's according to our handbook.
Okay.
Yeah.
How do you define part-time, full-time?
Well, they're not our seasonals or, or anything. It's like, they work the same every week.
They're a consistent part-time employee.
Monday through Friday, eight to noon.
And they typically work 28 hours a week when they're, when they're in that position. The state allows thirty, it's 31 or 32. Our handbook, I believe, says 31. Is that correct, Mayor?
I think it says 28 or 30. Might say 28. Yeah, I think, because we didn't take it to the max that we could.
Right.
You know, according to, yeah.
Right.
I remember that.
Yeah. So, if we wanted to go to the attorney, nothing was increased for any of those, which I know her hourly rate is going to go up. But we also have some other ways. I think we can move it around if we need to. We saw the contracted legal services, the paralegal, some of those. I didn't put any increases on the attorney. Where are we on hers right now? Let's see.
As, as a housekeeping measure, I'm curious, can we put attorney under the mayor? For future budgets?
Under my budget? The only thing is, they have all the other, like, supplies, and she has, where, if she needs to contact somebody from a legal, you know, like Barnes and Thornburg or somebody like that, so you would...
I guess I just don't see the point in it being all its own. I mean, this person serves as the mayor's attorney, correct? I mean, again, housekeeping-wise, trying to combine these things.
Not have a, not have an attorney's budget at all, just put all that into the mayor's?
I don't see the need for it personally. I guess I'm just asking by your thoughts or cares.
I didn't either. Could we do that? I, still, when you do come...
Still general.
But if you do combine it, will you still put the attorney in front of it so that I know? Yeah, just when we pay the bills, it'll just come out of a different, yeah.
Would it be under the mayor's budget or Board of Works?
Really either. I'm just, I don't know that we need an attorney budget. It's a contractual service, right?
I mean, you could probably put that down, like attorney's supplies and coffee charges, the same, attorney's supplies, and then...
Yeah, I'm not saying change the amount, I'm just...
Yeah, and then the instruction. And then her legal services, that's what we, used to be what we paid a salary for. And then the contracted, the paralegal, which is Patty, postage trouble, yeah. I, I'm fine with it. Put it all under, mayor, just make sure that you keep the attorney on there so that I can tell the difference as we pay bills or...
So, so then what's the difference of having a separate one or having it separate in your budget? Just easier.
Still separate.
Yeah. Kind of like we did community development here a while back. We put it into Board of Works, so she didn't have her own budget, it was under Board of Works, so...
So, we're, we're less of a quarter page here?
Yeah. You're minus this much.
It'll still be the same amount of paper.
Yeah.
A little bit less degrees.
Okay, so we have, um, mayor, we got the attorney, city council. Let's see, do we want to, do we want to do Board of Works? Of course, the board members, I think, like you said, Eric, that's something we're going to have to talk about. Oh, do we want to? Kimberly's...
Kimberly's scheduled a little later, but I'm sure if she's in the building, she could pop in.
Yeah, because she's in Board of Works. Or, won't we just go ahead and do edit since, and then we'll wait and do Board of Works and Kimberly together since she's in the Board of Works budget? How's that sound? Let's go to edit.
Go, go to edit. What page was that?
It is seventeen.
Fifteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
So, in edit, the one change that we had was, um, transportation of Clinton County, and I know now they've asked more than what I put in there. I put sixty-five. And then, the pool, I increased it 5% for the contractual service, because I don't know for sure what it's going to be. They have not given me a proposal. That SS4A's in there under the 50,000, and then, of course, the Hot Box, so those were the changes.
Is the, uh, future leaders program still active?
Yeah, we're going to be launching this year.
We're, we're trying our best, aren't we? Has Jim been able to get into them, to talk to them, do you know?
Yeah, I already got it okayed with the superintendent.
Oh, you did? Good, good. I had not heard that, so, yeah.
What's different about that program than, like, I don't know, learning to lead or any of the others in town?
Uh, it's more of approach toward local government and networking with local leaders here in the community. It's more of a... It, it's intended for the mayor's youth club, but more for youth civic engagement. So, for example, they get opportunities to learn from different sectors, like, they'll go to a club and learn from, like, the environmental affairs, IU, and stuff like that. It's, it's more of different opportunities than what similar kind of clubs offer. But more, more related to local government.
What did we decide on that? Fifty-fifty program.
Isaac was a part of that when he was in high school.
Fifty-fifty?
Yeah.
Um, leaving it at 20.
We're leaving it at 20, okay. Yeah, at one point, it was called Mayor's, but then when I came in, I didn't really know if, you know, I wanted to keep it as a Mayor's because, I mean, it could be any type of a youth...
Yeah, as a student, it was a Mayor's Youth Club. And when, when McBarnes' administration, I ran the club for McBarnes as the Youth Civic Engagement Club. And then when there was a change in administration, we ran it for a year, but we've been on a two-year hiatus. Just, we just haven't gotten back to it. That's a little, little bit more back of the background of the club.
I mean, I, supporter, I would have done anything for it. I just didn't think that it was right to call it a Mayor's Youth Program, but... Not that I don't support it, because I do, we work with them.
I would expect the cost of fireworks to go up considerably with tariffs, but, uh...
Where's, where'd you find, where's the fireworks?
About two-thirds of the way down.
Fireworks.
Three, two, one, oh, oh, three.
Whoever's, is it Jaycee's that still does that?
Uh, yeah.
Whoever's doing it is either going to have to look for more money or, or cut back their fireworks.
I've heard that, I've heard that.
Yeah.
I've heard there's a lot of talk about that. Because it, it's so costly right now.
Well, then next year, I know with, with the Chinese tariffs, that's where they get all their fireworks. It's going to go up, I would imagine.
Probably 50% or more.
Do you want to make a change on it?
I'm just throwing out that it's, they, they may come asking for more, or they may say, well, we're going to have to, to cut back the program.
Or change their sponsorships, maybe even, how they...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not necessarily wanting to change it, just that we, we'll probably hear about it.
I didn't, there was nothing from Main Street, I don't think, was there, on a different ask, I don't think.
I'm surprised there wasn't.
Yeah, last year, we had...
Steven's on vacation this week.
Last year, we had Paul Philippi, Main Street, and Core were, were the three asks.
Yeah.
So, we have Main Street that we pay quarterly, and then of the other, we pay out at promotional business, don't we? Yeah.
I can text, ask her, she wants, she stopped by real quick, or whatever. Dawn had mentioned that, uh, you found some opioid funds to help last year with the transportation. Is there anything left this year that can be part of that? I mean, I'm assuming there's some rehab-type transportation somewhere in those funds.
They can always go to ask for, can you find that restricted?
They got to go to that committee?
Yeah, they can go to the committee at any time.
Do, do you have a designated amount for the city that every year is...
It, it varies because it comes in as the settlements come in.
And we just go by what the committee...
And then we, we take the, so far, we've taken that committee's recommendation every time we've made a distribution, so...
We still owe some distribution.
We still owe some distribution out of this, yes.
We have 53,839, but I think we still owe...
I think at least half, over half of that is committed.
And all we have in the unrestricted is 8,964.
So, we just had a little bit more in the unrestricted last year that allowed us to pay for that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but she, they can go at any time before the committee, and then...
That might be a good suggestion to her, who might reduce the ask of us somewhat.
I don't know. We haven't had any come in for a while. I don't know why. They, they kept saying we were going to be getting it, but...
Yeah, we, we've seen a couple of emails saying that some more is coming, but we haven't seen anything yet. And then the next step for me is I have to come back to you all and get that appropriated into these lines because we can't spend it until it's appropriated.
Okay, the judge is here.
I just asked Cindy if she knew anything.
Okay.
I'll find out, since I, I'll let you know since I find out.
Okay. Okay, Matt, we're ready.
What page is that?
Much by way of presentation.
That's okay.
We have, uh...
Page five, eight, eight.
I even have my glasses on.
Not sure why you even came, bud.
We're requesting no increases in any other line items.
Oh. Good job.
Man after my own heart.
You're the fir, you're the first.
We're pretty simple departments, so...
So, you're okay with everything?
Absolutely.
Recording fees are down 8%? Recording fees are down 8%?
Oh, did they do a decrease?
That must be what the flat cost of it actually is, the 2150.
Yeah, that...
Our expenditure was a little more last year.
To get it set up originally, I think that's, the 2150 is the ongoing cost for it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
You needed that extra.
And that's some of this equipment.
Seen the negative in here.
Yeah. He's looking in the...
And right now, nothing's been, uh, decided on salary increases or whatever, so we won't know that until later, so...
Yeah, but I assume that would just fall in line with the rest of the employees, so...
Okay.
Anything else? Make that quick for you.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
What'd you find out?
That was simple. Do we have another one we want to look at? Did we do...
CCD, um, not by itself, but I think we've hit a lot of the...
Did we get a lot of them, wherever it might be?
It's page 16. I gave you a little tab, remember?
Oh, yeah, I forgot you gave me my little tabs here. I'm just searching through.
You want tabs? I'll make you some really quickly.
So, we took care of the unsafe blighted property, um, took out the Building Services Trail Initiative. You want to leave the 25,000 in there? I think that's the only thing, yeah.
Did we, did we use it this year?
No, we did not. But if we, one thing we may have to do if we don't is, um, those unsafe blighted properties that we have, if we...
Could we transfer out of that? Could we transfer out of Trail Initiative if we need it?
Yeah. You know, how we handle those blighted properties is something I think, you know, sometime we need to take a look at. Do we want to...
Like, I'm in real business, I need an escalator.
I know.
Thirty thousand, can I have that building down?
You know, here's the thing that I think we have to look at is...
How, how much is, um, get me out of jail for arson?
I didn't say that, that was him.
Oh, my gosh.
Life of prison's not a big deterrent.
You know, and I think you have to decide on those blighted properties at what point...
You know, some fire department...
Do we want to spend, I mean, like, that's $30,000 to take that building down, and it's going to take us...
Some fire department uses them as...
I think it's outrageous. Make a decision on each one of those?
I just had a little chat with Dawn about that, and I said, you really need to talk to the Board of Works on that because, yeah, because...
So, you could get a list of, of everything that's in the works and have an idea of how to disburse the money?
Yeah. When I was doing that, that's the way we did that, that's the way it was done.
Now, some of those go through the courts, and they're condemned. That's a different story than what the, that building that he was talking about. It would just be us taking it down, and then he would be able to...
I guess I don't understand taking a building down and the owner still owns the property.
That's what I'd be too. I'm right there with you.
Because like, that could still have value, being in its location. It'll probably be of more value with the building down. It'll probably be of more value with the building down
Yeah.
than with it up.
Right. I guess the Cricket people owned that.
What?
That's what he told me just now, well, online.
That, that's not who I sold it to eight years ago.
That's what he said, I don't, I don't know, and I'm like
We have Beacon.
I have to question, I have to question why
I mean, have, have they been assessed any code violations?
I don't
If it's bad enough to tear it down, I'm just curious what's been racking up on it.
They're, they're eat up with code violations, building violations, that building
It's not going anywhere.
It's not, it's not like
They're trying to take it down.
It's not like condemned right now, but I, but does the city wanna pay thirty thousand dollars to that's, that's the owner's responsibility.
Have they talked about that?
The ten dollars between the Cricket and the
But do we wanna take possession of it?
Thirty thousand dollar bill to tear it down, we put a lien on it, and then they turn on several
Kind of crowded, that wouldn't be a very good test.
No.
That's true.
Again, spot the other, the other cutting across the alley from the other center, it looks like crap. Before you're coming into town, that's on twenty-eight. Terry Geisler's ten, Dennis was
Terry used to be
The owner is GS Investments Property Incorporated on Grapevine Drive in West Lafayette.
Is that the same owners, the Cricket property?
Is that the Cricket building?
Uh, let's look. Prior to that, it was Prairie Creek Investments. Is that you? The Cricket building is Mann Brothers Holdings.
So it's not?
And Mann Brothers are also listed in West Lafayette.
I don't know, that's what
His intention, his intention was he was gonna be putting in a, a mini mark kind of thing there, but that was a while back.
I still think it's ridiculous, thirty thousand, take that building down. Escavator, two days, you'd have it done.
Two days would be done, yeah.
He said one of them was sixty.
That's ridiculous.
I had
One was thirty, one was thirty-six and one was sixty-seven.
I tore one down on North John Street, it's a old brick, and there's a silver door.
Miss my phone.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, man, it's a big person, two-story. That would be five years ago, six years.
I've operated a lot of excavators, and it'd only take two days to take it down, and about ten dumpsters. Fifteen at the most.
Sounds like Joe's gonna bid on it.
Nope, can't.
Or you would.
Cause I can get a hold of an excavator.
The city has a park petting zoo fund?
Uh-huh.
With a little over ten thousand five hundred dollars in it?
Uh-huh.
Do you know what that's, is that restricted on anything or what?
It, it would have to be used toward the petting zoo. I had, I had thought about that. Yes.
I believe so. There's the
Where's the fund?
I think it got shoved in here somewhere.
The fund's twenty-three oh five.
Right here.
So, yeah, it has ten thousand dollars. We had some conversations about using it last year to rehabilitate some of the the shelters in the petting zoo, but obviously we're in a different direction now. I was going to check with State Board of Accounts about what we, if we no longer have a petting zoo, what we could do with those funds. I'm sure they would revert back to the park in some capacity.
Are, are there expenses related to taking it, taking it down now?
I was gonna say, I think there will be.
That we could use it toward those?
Yeah, I'm sure there will be.
Yeah, use it toward those.
We also have an aviary fund with, with what, three thousand dollars in it, I think, so, again, about twenty-seven hundred.
Well, there's still some birds, we should use those on anything we can to use them up.
I agree. I will communicate that to, to Ryan and let him know that, that we can start using those.
I mean, I know the aviary is somewhat separate from the petting zoo, but maybe it's still zoo-related, maybe some of those zoo monies could be used toward the aviary cost too.
I think the petting zoo encompasses both.
Utilize them.
I think the petting zoo can encompass both, I think the aviary has to be the aviary.
Any expenses related to that, we should spend out of those things first. Spend those down, yes.
That's what I was saying, cause they're cleaning up right now, there's a lot to do in that barn.
Yeah, I know.
That's a lot of just our, our own personal labor, though, I don't know how much out of pocket is going that way.
And I mean, this is just my feeling, but if there's eight birds and a few tortoises, we should be re, rehoming them somewhere and just be out of the zoo business altogether.
I think we have, yeah, peacocks.
Yeah.
But they could, they're free roam, they can just
A few goats and one donkey, maybe, one or two?
Yeah, those can be quickly re, rehomed.
Two goats and two donkeys, I thought you said.
Are they trying right now, or was there a reason they were kept after the other ones?
No, they're trying, they're just
We're really, like, the tortoises and stuff, we're having a hard time, and the foxes.
The foxes are They've reached out to
You can help them, you'd have to go to the DNR.
Wildlife permit, I believe?
Yeah.
The, um, they've reached out to several different zoos and
Yeah, yeah.
And wildlife rehab centers and things like that.
Hope she's not watching, she might be flipping out.
It would seem the goats to be easy. My son raised the goats, he rehomes them all the time. Lots of people will take goats.
Not changed subject.
I think they might have somebody that they're waiting on
Okay.
to, that isn't quite ready for them yet.
How many goats do we have?
I think a few.
I think it's three.
Three or four.
Somebody's gonna take, um, I wanna say Rossville, maybe? Someplace they're waiting to get their enclosure ready.
I have a young man that's starting a goat farm, so he probably
I, I, yeah, we need to ask Brian to see, cause, or Ryan. Cause I thought he said somebody in Rossville was interested, but they weren't ready for him yet, so
I think it's, I think this guy's already started raising some goats, so he
Tell you why, they can't beat goat's milk. Best milk on the market. Not changed subject, but that house that Donald's talking about
CCD, are we done?
Burner. Why can't the fire department burn that down, it's saved a lot of work, money.
I don't know.
You wanna do clerk treasure?
Yeah, let's go for it.
It's a legal thing, it's in legal, it's in a process, so we need to ask him.
I believe so.
We need to ask him.
Why not just burn that down, save, tear it down? Fire department's using
She's not scheduled for a little bit, but I'm sure if we call her, she'll come down.
It's gonna be
Cause we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
We're gonna need some discussion at the end.
Now, where are we going?
We wanna do the clerk treasure?
Can we do clerk treasure now, and I'm messaging Kimberly right now?
Where's this?
Where are you at on here?
Page two. So I have just a, a few increases that are all related to just price increases for supplies in both CT and HR. And then I have a little increase in professional services, which actually should have been put into drug testing because our testing expense is going to be about twenty-seven hundred dollars more next year. And we've kind of been watching that because as we've gotten back into regular drug testing, which we didn't have during COVID, we've been, um, and then we went with a new company last year, we've been identifying the, the costs a little better and then so that's changed every year, and now they've, they've, there's been an increase in pricing. Postage has gone up and then telephone, our telephone bill has gone up a little bit. And so, yeah, those are, those are the changes that I have. I don't have any personnel changes. Any questions for me? Yeah, Mickey and Jerry, I apologize for that, I identified the wrong line for, to put that three thousand in, should go into the drug testing line, ending in three, two, five.
Drug testing?
Yes.
Okay, so So it doesn't go
We do it at least once quarterly, and then if, which is random, and, um, the we use WCMS, which is located out in the industrial park, Workman's Comp Management Services, and they, uh, they send us a list of numbers and that correspond with a, an employee. And then we also will drug test if there's an accident.
Oh, yeah.
What, what drugs are they screening for?
I can find that out for you, but I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't need to know, it's
Yeah. I know a lot of places do not do marijuana anymore, um
Why?
Why? Cause there's, there's a lot of states where it's legalized. It's just like the VA, they won't, uh, they don't test for that, because if they did, it's illegal here and it's legal wherever it's legal at.
Also, I know that a lot of the industrial park doesn't drug test for marijuana anymore because it, it diminishes their workforce quite a bit and they can't
Sixty percent of employees
They lose fifty percent of their personnel, I guess.
Yeah.
But if, I, I will find out and let you know.
I don't need to know, I'm just curious.
I can satisfy your curiosity.
I'm gonna find out on that Hammersley building. You know what?
And Kimberly is here.
Hi.
What page is Kimberly?
She is page four. I'm sorry, it's three and four, right?
She's Board of Works, um
Yeah, it's, Board of Works starts on three and continues over to four.
Before we start on that, Kimberly, could you talk to us a little bit about that, um, that grant?
Which one?
SS four A.
Oh, SS four A?
Yeah, and when you came before the council and talked about it, and then tell us a little bit more, we kinda like, it's been a while.
Yeah, absolutely. SS four A, we are to the process now that we have received two proposals from the request or the RFP that we put out. We're currently going through the selection process, um, we have to score those, this is all through Federal Highway Safety Grant, and then hopefully make that selection within the next, um, you know, couple weeks or next Board of Works meeting. Once that is complete, we will be able to start the project with a kickoff meeting with whichever firm or company we go with. The matching for that is fifty thousand dollars currently. I didn't bring those down here with me to give the exact what that match could be, but it won't exceed fifty thousand. And so I believe that is what Brian, um, or I think Carol might have put in to the budget to make sure that we had those matching dollars for SS four A. What SS four A does is we will put a comprehensive plan together of all of our roads for the city of Frankfurt, including the new annexed area. And it will look at, based on the need of the roads, and not pays a rating with paving, this is based on the need, whether it's walkability, whether it's safety for pedestrians or, um, drivers, and puts a, it compiles it, so then when we go after like a Mash Road grant, or will help us with CCMG, Community Crossings Matching, we'll be able to take this comprehensive plan of all the roads and be able to put it into our grant system for other grants. It will elevate our grants, so instead of just coming in and saying, hey, we wanna do Mash Road because we think Mash Road needs to be done, or hey, we think Barner Street needs to be done, it will actually kind of give us almost a checklist of, okay, we've looked at the scope of, of Frankfurt and these are the roads that we see are the dire need, and puts them into kind of a priority list. And so that way, um, when we go after these grants, we can say, hey, look, we've done this, this is our plan, now we wanna hit this section or we wanna hit this area, and so that's kind of what SS four A puts together. It is a I'm getting them confused because I'm doing OKRA at the moment. I, I believe it's ninety-ten or it's eighty-twenty match for that.
Didn't we start talking about this a while back, I mean, you came before
Oh, this has been a process, we were awarded this November of twenty-four was when we got the notification, and then with the new administration at the federal level, it's taken us several months to get them to look through everything with a fine-tooth comb and, and approve us yet again. And so we just had everything signed by Federal Highway Safety to start with the RFP, which is where we're at. So I think Jason and I put this together twenty-three, twenty-four. And we, like I said, it'll be a, a year-long process, once, whenever the kickoff date is, you're looking at this taking between nine and twelve months to complete. This could also be used to go towards, I know you guys have talked about a comp plan. This'll be one more tool that we can use in that comp plan as well. But yeah, happy to answer any questions about, about that grant. But yes, it came before the council, Board of Works. Definitely in twenty-four. I think it was last fall. Yeah, we were awarded the funds November of twenty-four. So I think Jason and I started putting the process together, it was either spring of twenty-four or the end of twenty-three. But I, I know we definitely had lots of conversations in twenty-four.
But fifty thousand would cover that, but we don't know exactly.
It will not exceed fifty thousand.
Okay.
And I believe where the firms stand on how long it takes is kind of where that where that money may change a little bit.
Okay, so we're looking in the Board of Works budget on page three of anything that says CD after Community Development.
Yes.
Of course, right now, we still don't know what we're doing on the salaries. Your overtime, we raised it five hundred? Your longevity stayed the same?
Yes, it won't change for a couple more years.
We did put in there for a part-time community development person for twenty-five hours a week, which was part of my thoughts this morning when I had talked to Dawn earlier about if he did not need somebody part-time in Building Services anymore, if we could use that part-time person and put it into, for community development to help you on what all you're doing because of working with grants and different things that you've been asked to do. She's been, she's been picking up a lot from
Different departments.
From different departments. They have been, yeah, she's been helping with ADA, she's been helping with grants.
Don't forget IT.
IT, she's been doing the IT stuff, so she's been doing a lot lately. And that's the reason why I asked Dawn if he would, you know, not need somebody part-time because nobody in his office is really doing the ADA stuff outside of Dawn, so it wasn't getting done, so
I usually pick up where other departments may or may not have personnel or may or may not have knowledge and I just, we just make it happen, so, and keep the city moving forward. Grants take a lot of time, and I know that we've had this conversation, um, you know, before that we can go after grants, and I, I absolutely love grants because it stretches our, our tax dollars a lot. I mean, there's a lot of things that, projects we wouldn't be able to do. You know, SS four A is one of them without this grant. And, but the thing is with it, there's multiple steps, there's multiple, um, funding, there's multiple things that we have to take into account for this, each grant that I have has a binder, has a folder. Each grant that I have has a binder, has a folder, and I'm constantly making sure that we are reporting, you know, on a timely manner that everything stays kosher with Carol's office, the department that it's going to be in. About the only department that I don't help with grants is Scott's with the Police Department with Chief Shoemaker. But everything else, usually nine times out of 10, runs through my office. And while community foundation grants, those are, I don't want to say they're easy, but there there's a lot less steps than what goes in those as opposed to an OKRA or a federal grant. And especially with the changes in administration at the federal level, those grants have gotten exceedingly more competitive and a lot more steps. And so I, you know, with the, I'm going to butcher this, I butcher it every time, the North Central Indiana Region Planning Yes, thank you, Clarence. They're a great asset, but they charge $4,800 every time we do a grant with them. And I think that's something that needs to be recognized to you all that while I love working with them, I'm the ones still doing the work. They're the ones that are just submitting the grant. And so with OKRA especially, I know that I've asked some of you to be on that selection committee just to to select a firm. That all has to still run through my office.
You talked to Steve Ray on that?
I'm
$4,800?
$4,800. I just got a bill.
Really?
For submitting the grant?
Is that, that's not our
Portion?
It's not our portion for the city to pay?
That is our portion the city has to pay every time we do a grant.
Because we pay them an annual fee.
We pay them an annual fee on top of that.
Kimberly, what do you mean by submitting the grant? Sending an email or?
I I am going through the process now currently of an OKRA to be an OKRA certified grant writer. But for the comp plan, when we get when we get awarded, we will have to pay $4,800 on top of whatever our percentage is. Now, that isn't SS4A. SS4A I did completely by myself with Jason. But when I use the North Central Indiana Region Planning Council, they have, I have the spreadsheet, happy to share it with you all. It's $4,800 for them to submit. And that will be through a portal.
What does that cover? Was that 4,800? When you say submit, what are they doing?
They're pretty much making sure that all of my paperwork looks right to be submitted. Yes, I know.
They don't write it for you?
They will help and assist.
Am I missing something? Am I missing something?
They're probably putting their stamp of approval on it. That carries some weight.
It does carry weight.
Yeah.
We give them $13,000.
Just to be a member of that organization, what do we pay them?
We give them $13,000 a year.
No, I did that for Community Foundation. This is my first grant through them.
Is it more than that?
Which is why I had the same sticker shock that you did, Taylor.
So we'll see if we get this first grant with them and if it's worth 4,800.
The county pays that much, too.
County pays that much as well, I believe. We pay 13,000.
And they pay 13,000.
Yeah.
But as far as this part-time person?
But I can't do an OKRA grant without them because right now I'm not certified and you have to go through the classes. And I have been through step one. There's two more steps to go. Tim is helping me stay organized, stay on a timeline. I will give him that. But I'm putting all of the paperwork together. I'm, I mean, he doesn't know our community. I do, or at least I feel like I do. So while I, you know, I just want that to be something that you guys know, that every time that we do a grant through them or with them, that there is there is a fee attached to that. And it's something that if we do a grant every once in a while, it's probably, in my eyes, 5,000 is a lot, but it's you're also getting 250, $300,000, you know, playing out of that. But if we were constantly doing grants through them, if we're, I don't know what they would charge for CCMG. I know Brian can do a fantastic job. I've done them with the assistance of both of Jason, who was here, and then Brian. But there's the wordsmithing all comes from me, so.
So that's why Jason did those grants on the crosswalk without going through Steve Ray.
Yeah, so what is the $13,000?
That's just to be a member.
It's just a membership fee.
That's a membership fee for to be in that region.
I did not realize that they want to charge extra.
I didn't realize they charged for every grant.
Yep. So now I don't know if we did a Federal Highway Safety, if that number changes. I've not had that conversation. This is through OKRA, through the state. So it's something that, you know, it's it's still time consuming. It's not that I'm paying them, you know, or we're paying them or however you want to word that, $4,800. And then I don't have to do a whole lot except for giving them stuff. No, I still have I have an email with a to-do list a mile long of things that I have to have done on a timely manner. So it's just it's my office is I'm one that doesn't usually ask for help. I'm the last one. I've been here in this position four and a half years, and I usually don't ask for anything. I can usually get it done. But I am to the point that we are missing out on funding opportunities. We're missing out on communication. We're missing out on a lot of steps because I'm pulled in a lot of different directions. And that's that's when I asked the mayor. I said, if if something doesn't change, we are going to have to shift how this office operates. And the things that are either going to be missed due to shifting the office or we have somebody come in here and and be a part of this office and knows what goes on, social media, the website. I don't know if anybody stayed up to date with the ADA requirements, but I have to totally redo the website and make sure it's ADA compliant by the end of '26. Thank goodness, we're not a huge community because I'd have to have it by the end of this year. But everything has to be ADA accessible. So we have to make sure that our colors can change and that if you are hearing impaired or vision, those all have to be taken into consideration. We can no longer do PDFs on the website. Those aren't ADA compliant. So there's a lot of things that are going to have to change on the website side of things as well. And if we aren't ADA compliant, well, then we don't get grants and we don't get some type, you know, different types of funding. So I have sat through a lot of workshops with with Don because when he first said, oh, well, the city app needs to change, social media needs to change, the website needs to change, I'm like, whoa, what do you mean? Timeout. Because then not only do I take care of nine social media accounts, but now I have to make sure the city app and the city website is also ADA compliant. And that's just not a click. There's a backend to to the websites and what we do. And Shane knows some of that, but, you know, Shane has a full agenda of his own for IT. So those are just some things, some major things. Of course, they were changed and I don't have any type of funding to help with that, kind of like the same thing with the streaming for YouTube and those type of things. We're kind of told this is what we need to do and I just have to make it happen. So that's kind of the reason that I had asked the mayor if we can, we can put this in, entertain this idea because the office is is starting to become overwhelming.
I don't know how you do it the way it is now. I don't.
A lot of hours.
I've been in your office many times talking to you and I just could not believe the colleagues and everything else you get what.
It's something that if this person can help assist with grants and could help assist with with communications, would be definitely beneficial.
We put a lot of the grant stuff into that office right now and applying for those.
I personally think if we can possibly find a cut somewhere, I'd prefer to have her a full-time assistant, not part-time. Because I've seen and I only know half of what she does, so.
That doesn't include the economic development side of things and welcoming businesses into the community. I have a fun job. It's never boring.
We have a few coming in at downtown, don't we?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
We have four ribbon cuttings this week, just
Yes, we love it. Your office applies, you left the same?
Yes. The only other increase, I believe, and let me double check just to make sure, I believe was my cell phone slash iPad because it was going up.
Oh, I see. It looks like mileage reimbursement?
Mileage reimbursement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Your postage, did we raise that any?
Nope, that stayed the same. I don't know if I have the most current.
Travel expense, 500. Cell phone, iPad, 360. Professional services, 500. You raised it. I think that, is that it? Yeah, I believe it is, yeah.
And the reason for those for travel expense and for mileage reimbursement, I don't have a city vehicle. I use my own. And I'm hoping that if this part-time person or this extra person was added to my office, that I could actually go out to other communities and see what's going on around us and not just 50 miles radius. I'm hoping that we can go out and see and meet other communities that are like-minded, same size potentially as us or looking to grow and how we can either partner with them or see what's working and bring some of those, you know, ideas back to back to Frankfurt. You know, sometimes I think we get a little tunnel vision and some blinders on and kind of spreading out and figuring out what we can do, you know, to better our community and move it forward. I'm not saying we take every idea and run with it, but there's some ideas that we can Frankfurtize and, you know, make our own. Other than that, the IT budget, we did not, I mean, I know that's not, I mean, it's in Board of Works, but it doesn't have CD behind it. But Carol and I have touched on that budget and we don't see any changes for the next year as well.
I think that's the only budgets you use in it.
Yeah, IT and then anything that says CD.
Do I have any questions?
Making sure. Do you have any questions or anything that I can hopefully answer?
Think I'm good. Everybody good?
I have a question, but it's not about our office. Cindy doesn't know if Kim Stevens is going to come here or not. I know she's on vacation. Have you talked to her about it?
I have not talked to Kim Stevens. She she was not scheduled to be a part of this.
I didn't know she'd asked.
Normally, we we only would react to somebody that reached out and asked for an increase. And at this time, at the time of the scheduling of these meetings, Don Leighton was the only one that had reached out, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If I can do Board of Works.
I think we have covered I think we've covered every budget and department. And we're ahead of schedule, friends.
Board of Works on health insurance liability, all that. I just did a 5%. I don't know. We don't know right now, do we? Any projections on that?
No.
I don't know what is going on with our gas bill, but something
We haven't been able to get any answers about that. It jumped way up and and
Yeah, I mean, like crazy went up, the gas did.
Yeah, mine mine went up almost 40%.
Well, that must just be
Maybe it's just that.
That's budget building.
Yeah, they couldn't find any leaks. They can't find anything. But our our gas bill is
Gas bill.
Really high here at Old Stoney.
Just the Indiana gas? Yeah.
Judy, before we get away from the topic, I don't know if I'm alone here, but I kind of view this part-time Community Development Director needs to go on the wish list, not just left in here without question. Talking about not hiring fire, but I think we need to add that to that list. I feel for the fact that she's working harder, but I think maybe there's some other alternatives before we hire another staff member in that office.
Well, the one reason why I thought that, too, is because she was picking up stuff from Building Services and they said they weren't going to use theirs. And so that was kind of mine.
Is there a body already in that office in Building Services? It's not, okay.
It was an open
It was going to be a new hire regardless, whoever used it.
It's what they had always had was a part-time person. They hadn't filled it and, yeah. And it seemed like she was, you know, picking up some of that stuff. So rather than if they hired somebody and they that's what I'm saying, they could work for her as well, so, okay. Like I said, on the insurances and stuff, I just went up to 5%. We had to, of course, the gas quite a bit. Did raise promotion of business, 1,500 for the city. I think on the FICA and PERF, I think I've already passed that out, but you guys have to do that. Once we decide on the raises, what that's going to go up.
Yeah, I mean, that's 3%, so if we do 1%, that's going to be 1%.
Yep, so we don't have any, you know, things on that. Other than that, I don't really see anything too much. And insurance is always up in the air. We don't know at this point. No. I hate that on the gas bill, but we're we're not going to have the money and the appropriation this year to pay it. We're going to have to do some transfers.
Yeah, we already spent more than the
Yeah.
The budgeted amount by June 30.
And they can't give us any reason for that, so.
So you budgeted what, 14,000?
14,000, and we spent 14,700 as of June 30.
Do any of the individual gas meter bills show an increase where others don't? Or is it just across the board?
It seems to be across the board.
We had a leak out there when we had
They said that wouldn't have made the difference. I asked the people from the gas company. I said, oh, is that the reason why our gas bill's gone up so much? And they said it should not have affected it like that. I don't know.
It was at the meter, so.
Yeah.
If it was after the meter, I think it would have affected.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's on the other side of the meter, it wouldn't affect it.
No, not on their side. But on their side of the meter, it's also high pressure on the customer's side, it's low pressure.
Judy, I see here we have an Old Stoney bond payment?
Yes.
For '24. I don't see it for '25.
Old Stoney bond payment? Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
It's it's in the 300s. It's about six up from the bottom.
It's on page
Uh, four.
Page four, if you look under.
Right under natural gas.
Did you move it? It was moved to LED ED, okay.
Do what?
It's in edit.
Oh, they moved it to edit for this year?
Page 17.
Yeah, there it is.
Do you know how many more years we have on?
I can find out.
Yeah, it was, what was that, 17?
I thought that was on a 20-year deal.
So, yeah.
So we still got 17 more years on it?
Well, I mean, I think we, that would have been probably 17, the first payment.
The first payment was probably in 17.
Last year, okay.
So we still got 10 more years on that. Do we have anything that we're going to be paying off pretty soon?
I don't think so.
No.
Well, lucky with all those renovations, there's no cost associated with the building anymore, right?
Steve, we do, back to the drug screen question. We do a standard five-panel screen and it does include marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamine, opiate, and PCP.
and it does include marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamine, opiate, and PCP.
What's PCP?
Angel dust. It's the one that people used to think they could fly, I, I don't think it's even popular anymore. Like, they would, yeah.
Been a long time since I've.
It's like in the seventies, it was really popular.
I see awful lot of little bottles.
I saw a movie about it once.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of stuff out on the market these days that probably isn't within that screen.
So, so what do we have left? What do we have left, anything?
I think we have all departments done and all individual budgets done. And we don't have, we're, we're ahead of our schedule.
So do you guys know where we stand on these deficit totals? Specifically, the general fund?
Based off the one percent budget summary, the general fund deficit of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. MBH is at, uh, deficit of forty-eight thousand. The H restricted, deficit of seventy-four thousand. LRS is thirty-five thousand. Sanitation's a hundred and forty-five thousand. Lit public safety, deficit of five hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Hundred and sixty-two?
Five hundred and sixty-two, no change.
Oh, I thought you said a hundred.
No change.
CCD deficit of four thousand two hundred and forty-eight. Kemento Fire has a deficit of fourteen thousand six eighty-one. Lit Economic Development deficit of five hundred and twenty-three thousand.
No change.
And Riverboat deficit of seventy-one thousand.
So nothing significant.
And, and that's with no new firemen, too.
What was that general fund again, four hundred and?
Four hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and twelve.
So we took it down by just a little less than a hundred thousand.
About eighty thousand dollars down, ninety thousand.
So on the no firemen, one percent salary increase, we're still looking at needing to cut into the four hundred thousand range on general fund. Do we have a list of those items we put on that side list?
I, the only one that, that I really heard that about, and I apologize if, if I missed something, was the part-time community development.
So.
And I have, yeah, I have notes about some other.
I had revisit next to the Riverboat. I didn't have a revisit here, I just noted it as far as in Riverboat also, that the twenty-five thousand dollar increase was specifically the different kind of physical
I think we can take that one off the list, can't we, agree? I mean, that's firefighters' lives we're talking about.
Keep it.
You mean, keep it in the budget, take it off the maybe list?
Yeah, I, I think that's important.
What, what was that again?
The physicals for the fire.
The physicals for the fire.
Yeah, I think we have.
It's in Riverboat, page fourteen.
And it's every two years, did he say that they'd have the complete physicals?
Yes.
So if we can get.
Eric, you, you had asked Chief Shoemaker salaries versus vehicles, so I made this based off of that question, that, you know, he could, if it was a choice, like he could make three vehicles work, but I don't know.
Three of the, the.
More than five.
Or.
He's, he's got six total, one being code enforcement.
Right, so is he saying he would still need?
It's just what I put down, that he, like, he could make three new ones work, so I guess that means making three out. But, and then.
But, but he was saying that he would still want his full salary increase?
Yeah.
So he didn't get either?
You want, all you want.
I don't, I don't, I don't see how we give him three percent and everybody else one.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, 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 no.
The fire, fire chief, he said that, you know, first if you had to cut something, you know, it would be the engine slash ladder to cut, this is still the public safety, but he mentioned they were working up.
Was that forty grand?
I think it's forty.
So that was the fire hose and other, other tools for the new truck?
Yes.
A new, a truck that won't be here until twenty twenty-seven anyway?
Page fifteen, ending in four two oh point zero zero zero.
And then the question was, like, if he got one big new vehicle, which he has the fire command vehicle and then the medical response vehicle. I think Steve might ask.
Yeah, and he, he said, one or the other, he'll, give, give, give me the amount and I'll decide which.
That means, like, it would be good to cut one, or if he definitely still needs at least one, or, but he mentioned that. I think Mickey had changed it, was this what the team was as far as it decreasing the deficit, the, uh, the radios? Yes. So we, um, he, he mentioned the team fire deficit, which had decreased. That's because on this scenario of no firefighters, I asked, you know, chief, and I think he already explained it, I just wanted to make sure how, how much each radio or per firefighter, how much of the radios, I mean, he said eight fifty, probably ten, so Mickey's already accounted for that. I know that.
I'm picking it out, we just shifted it to Riverboat.
Riverboat, yeah.
So then that's another four, if no new firefighter were added. I have a star next to the bark improvements within the CDC to revisit that one as well. Then on page seventeen, Lit ED, which we've talked about, the transportation coming back to that. We only have sixty-five in there, she had mentioned.
A hundred, yeah.
And then I put a note next to MBH, the hot box, Brian said usually we talk to RDC.
Yeah, I was going to talk to RDC about that.
What if we get the RDC to pick up that SS four A, too?
I don't know, can they? Can, does anybody know? Can RDC do it?
It benefits the TIF, benefits economic development, even if it might not go in the TIF area.
Service like that, is that, is that okay?
I, I would ask for the SS four A before the hot box personally. That's all about planning and, you know, making the community.
I just didn't know if the RDC would let you, I'm taking a break, I've got nobody else, I've been drinking too much.
But if we take, if we cut one of those vehicles out of part of them. That doesn't come out general fund, does it?
I think so.
One of four.
I always get confused on funds. Like, I always.
At least four, it might have been five.
I thought they asked for five and they got four.
I, I don't remember they started out under the.
So I'd say this year you're getting two. Oh, if can't come out of here, then we'll.
If this year is about when it was purchased and not the model.
What are your hands out now, I laughed about that, my wood trucks no one.
I don't think it was just four, I think he's been going for five or six every year.
There are six, twenty, twenty-four.
Run out of things we can move.
Or maybe that's just the.
Three days ago, I couldn't have done this, I couldn't have sat in a chair, my back was so blown out.
Two minutes, right? I'm good, thank you.
Moving furniture in boxes from my, my daughter's house and my house for six months, and the very last piece of big furniture we were moving into the cabin last, last week. And as, as I pushed it toward its place, it just went, ah, I heard it snap. Yeah, yeah, I couldn't move for two days.
Oh, my goodness, so you were in bed for two days?
Yeah. I just barely, I'm, I'm, I'm able to kind of bend that, so I'm getting it back. It's happened several times in my life, and it always takes about five days.
Oh, congratulations. Awesome.
Those two are brothers.
Okay. Yeah.
I've never heard that.
It's, it's a T O W, not T O E. It's got something to do with the color of, like, flax, when they used to make, you know, make braided robes and things out of flax. It's toe was a product of it, it was similar.
That's awesome.
Like, you know, saying a girl has, like, honey, honey colored hair or something. Yeah, one time with my, my younger daughter, she had, her best friend had that white blonde hair. And I used to say, you're just a little pumpkin. My elder daughter as well, she, she'd say in her hand, like, oh, something like that. She doesn't know that what that means.
Well, I, I have, I have opened with a thing to print that up. Unless they made a job. It's cold in here, man, it's freezing.
It is cold in here.
Wow. Here you go. What's going on, I just can't. Oh, I tried, yeah, I tried. It's a good deal you're doing. I like, I love stuff like that, I like. I appreciate people like that, like yourself, I really do, sorry, big deal. I bet it's fun, isn't it?
We'll see how fun.
Yeah, it'll be fun. It'll be fun. Got a good attitude, it'll be fun. Well, thank you. I barely made it drop. You're going to tell for my brother. I understand this a lot better than I did out there. We're going to try to wrap this up here tonight. Well, it's hard, you guys will have to come back. What, like Seymour, is that where you're at?
Yeah.
I was thinking your Carmel office.
First day of school for three kids, too. She's a teacher.
Oh, so she's getting herself ready and them, and, that's a big morning.
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
I'm tired, it's right there.
Going a long walk tonight. Darla get you walking?
Huh?
Darla get you walking?
Oh, yeah.
It's good for you.
No, I don't need that, I'm good.
You're just calling.
I didn't drink, it was, it would be nothing, leave me alone.
I'm seeing your vice. Sugar.
Not just dirty air.
Sugar.
Huh?
Sugar.
Yeah. I don't do it at home.
Sounds like you've got a warden at home.
Not, huh?
You got a warden at home on the sugar.
Well, she's.
She likes it, so keep yours.
Sugar is her enemy. Well, she's trying to make it fun.
So we don't have to do everything to the other.
I just do it out of respect for her because she don't like it. I don't want her yelling at me.
Peace, keep the peace.
I will crush my sayings.
We don't yell.
We'll wrap this up. Tell me anyway.
Do you do any other activities similar to our size?
I don't see why we couldn't have a plan.
Are they, are you in the same boat, or they are in the same boat?
I don't care.
I'm just curious.
So what do you think? No, no.
You know, if we stick to what we said, based upon their recommendation, I think that's a few more things. Where do you have to reduce?
I know.
Four firemen, it leads to four hundred.
Oh, I know that. Oh, I know that.
They don't say she does the best she can. Work her butt off.
One of these trucks is yard. Half of the shoemakers' cars are on at least. It's these little things.
Well, you have to cut. We don't have a lot.
We could get into.
We're still not on live, are we?
They went up to one hundred and forty seven.
We are on live?
Okay, what are we gonna do?
Sorry.
You're fine.
Hunt.
Well, I think, I think that kind of discussion merits the, the police chief being here to answer questions.
Police chief?
I'm sorry, fire chief.
Fire chief.
Want me to text him?
Unless, unless you're doing that in a committee.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine if you don't bring him in in front of the councilor, I don't.
Who, who?
Matt.
Matt? Do you want me to have Andrea call him?
Do you need Scott at all, or are you just thinking fire chief right now?
I mean, I, I think we, do we all agree that the fire chief is the, the first priority?
Yes. I think the police chief indicated he is agreeable with accepting what we tell him he needs, what we need to do.
Yeah. Maybe not, not as critical.
What about, okay, before, what about not just the employees, what about the vehicles? He's got two, he's got medic one, he's got.
Give him one of them.
Uh, medic one and, um.
Command truck and.
Command truck.
Give him one of them.
He had the same, had the same budgeted fifty-five.
And I asked him which one he'd rather have. He said, just let me know how many are getting over the side.
Yeah.
Do you want me to call him?
So that's not gonna help. That's not gonna help to get rid of one of those.
He had one down for, yeah, both of them down for fifty-five thousand.
I mean, ours is, I can text him if you want.
I can call him or we can have Andrea call him.
I don't care.
Do you wanna do it? Do you want me to call him?
Go ahead.
Okay, I will call him.
You say that, uh, that new city general fund was down to four ninety-seven negative?
No.
And if we get it to zero, that gives us an approximate twenty-three. I know it's a little off, but approximately twenty-three percent on the year end percentage.
But do you want to have that at zero with that cash reserve, I guess is my question.
Well, I mean.
Hello, chief. This is Carol.
They just said the cash reserve will go down at a rate of potentially eight hundred thousand per year.
Yes.
For the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
That's what I'm saying. Do we wanna?
He's on his way.
And more manpower is cumulative, so it's, that adds to.
But is there anything else in the city general that was gonna go away? Probably not.
Well, we can, we can transfer over and we can use up the balance on the riverboat and the C C D, we said. Yeah, there's still, well, don't do it with manpower. You guys agree those need to be the one-time purchases shifted over there so we don't have to pull it back following year?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to see what could within supplies or other services. A lot of it's probably occurring. I'm not sure if there's any thing that was a one-time increase or maybe.
He wouldn't need all that radio money either, didn't he say? Isn't that right?
Yeah. I don't have any idea. This year it's ninety-six thousand. That second line is the projected revenue.
You know, I suppose it's possible in twenty twenty-six that we can get a heavy P S lit. What'd you call that?
Supplemental?
Supplemental.
And that's actually, um, yeah, it's for edit and P S lit usually.
You know, one thing we didn't talk about is a, a grant has been submitted, a safer grant, right?
Yes.
For how many men?
I don't know.
He's on his way back in, so. It's two or three, I believe.
Is it?
That covers about fifty to seventy-five percent of the.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the safer grant how that works for the fire.
It's for the, for the police officers, it was seventy-five percent of their salary and we had to handle all of the.
Equipment.
Yeah, equipment.
Benefits, did we get benefit, credit?
And I think he was smart to apply for because we said that last year.
Right.
We need to find ways around this. We just didn't know about S B one last year.
What was that? Yes, what, two new officers?
I'm sorry?
Was it, they were grants?
We don't know how many some of the grants.
Yeah, I don't know how many.
Chief Stidham's on his way back, so he, you can ask him the, those questions.
Guys, we don't know what the exact, uh, circuit breaker effect for next year's revenue is yet, do we?
It hasn't been certified.
Okay, but.
Do you know, though? Do you have some?
Do you have anything in here for that?
So for next year, we factor in what the current circuit breaker environment is, adding on, you know, a little bit more of the debt to get to the full payments. So there's an impact due to that. And then we also include descent impact.
Okay.
All within circuit breakers.
Does, does it include the trending that happened here in the community that, that, because I think the trending's gonna be up pretty good here. Because if that, if you didn't, that'll give us a little bit. You mean as far as A V. Yeah.
That's kinda what we're waiting on.
Yeah. Been checking throughout. Yeah, because I, I think, I think that should help us because our, our trending in this community was up a bunch last year.
We, we went with how it currently is for this year and kinda carried that forward with those other two factors.
Which, which that's what I would have assumed that you did. I just wanna make, because again, I don't know how, how big, it might not be a big thing, but I think it should help us some.
Yeah, and we factored, factored in, I think, a one percent A V growth.
Yeah.
In these numbers and in fact rates.
Okay.
So anything above that should help. Um, but what, what it'll do is lower the dribbler breaker, lower the impact.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I, I know the counties were supposed to submit those by August first, I believe, and five total counties have submitted so far, so. We're kinda waiting.
Yeah.
Um, of the forty-four firemen that we currently have, how many of our, our, say, admin, like, work the day shift?
I believe just the one training. Fireman.
And that doesn't include Katrin, right?
Katrin's a civilian now. Um, so there's forty-six employees in that department, two civilians, the, the admin assistant, and then Katrin.
Forty-three or on shift?
Forty-four. Oh, forty-three if you take out the, the day shift training officer, yes, sorry.
And I'll remove the chief because he's got other responsibilities, so forty, forty-two probably is what you're counting.
Forty-two available to rotate. Is that what you're looking for?
They got three, three shifts.
I'm not sure. I think that's what they do.
Not the wrong one, off two.
I don't know how that works.
And then, uh.
They do, they do like twenty-four on, twenty-four off, three days in a row, and then they do four off or something like that.
Well, they changed that.
Yeah, it's, it's confusing. You have to have a big chart in front of you to.
It's like one on, one off, one on, one off, then they have four off, then they have, yeah, it's crazy.
Ten, ten days a month, or ten days in a twenty-eight period, twenty-eight day period. Is that how it's done?
Could be. I don't know how they, I'd have to look at my schedule. I, I just keep a schedule.
I thought I heard it was eleven days. In the, in the month. But you have to think that's forty-two people. I'm assuming there'll be four stations. That's a little month.
I was thinking they had twelve. Per shift.
Fourteen.
It's a fourteen.
Mickey, what is the number you quoted earlier about, um, each one percent increase, uh, each, uh, each one percent raise?
Seventy thousand.
Is about seventy thousand?
It's eighty-five thousand overall. For the general fund. About seventy.
Thank you.
That including benefits?
Just salaries.
Okay, so you, you'd also get seven point six five percent FICA pension, a little bit more than that.
But you did that on this calculation.
Was there any agreement about, I'm sorry, I was on the phone with Chief Stidham, um, about vehicles? Or is that still a discussion point?
It's still being discussed.
Okay.
How, how much are the police cars each, just roughly with equipment?
With equipment? Yeah, the equipment is, I believe, like an additional twenty, though.
Oh, is it that much?
I think so.
Let's see.
And it's all done for seventy-five grand each.
Well, wait, we can figure it out. There's ninety thousand for five vehicles.
Ninety thousand?
Well, I'm not sure if that includes that, uh.
If they're buying.
Code enforcement.
Just for the equipment?
If they're buying, huh?
Just for the equipment.
It's the equipment.
I want one of those.
But for five vehicles, he has two hundred and sixty-five.
Eighteen, eighteen thousand.
Two sixty-five for five years.
Two sixty-five divided by five, so it's fifty-three.
Fifty, fifty-three, fifty-four thousand.
Plus eighteen. That's what he has in the budget, yeah, fifty-three plus eighteen.
So just call seventy grand each.
Seventy-one.
So cutting him in half.
So that's all we can do.
About two hundred and twenty thousand.
So that's all we can do. Yes, you're right. Not much choice.
Cut him in half, cut the fire, fire in half. At a hundred per man. Drop the community development part-time, drop one of the two trucks. And then get the R D C to pick up about a hundred grand worth of some capital for the street department, if possible.
What were you thinking?
That gets us there.
Hot box and S S four?
Well, the S S four A makes sense to me, and I think you can sell that to the R D C.
If that's an expense that they can pay, I would guess. Do you guys know?
Or, which I don't know.
The only reason I didn't say fire vehicle is we went to the R D C to get them to give us a quarter million for engine three, saying we would not push them on any additional fire.
Yeah.
So I don't know when the statute of limitations runs out on that.
I don't think you're there yet.
If it's still in your memory, it's in someone else's, too.
I know. If the engine three's replaced, everybody here will be smiling.
Yeah.
How much have we put into that in the last couple of years?
Oh, I'd hate to think. I don't know the full amount. Matt could probably tell you, but.
That's an over a hundred thousand.
Is, is Center Towns pretty flush?
Engine three?
Well.
I'll stay help with some of this.
Lot of repairs.
That's our department.
I don't know.
One of them. Which one do they have? Because they're paying a town for it right now.
Tanker and a grass.
Yeah, they're already paying some hefty.
So is there any appetite to talk about fire territories?
No. I mean, that's me.
How about forcing the townships to hand the fire contract?
I think they're giving about all they have. That's the problem.
Statutorily, guys, we talked about this once before, that townships can have a levy for, can they have a levy for contractual obligations? Like, not net service, but if they had an ongoing contract.
I hope we have them maxed out.
The contracts for the services usually are within one of their existing boxes. That they're paying for with their current property tax.
Two new trucks coming.
Center towns. Any questions? Matt, Matt can drill down on that one. Center township's probably the only one that's actually paying an appropriate amount.
Obviously, that's gonna be more, and that's maybe this year, but we go back to that. Like in twenty twenty-four, their township fire D M S fund, I mean, their receipts were just over two hundred fifty-three thousand and their disbursements were, um, just under ninety-nine thousand. So they grew the cash by.
Did you happen to check on the fire contracts? And Matt might be able to tell us.
No, I.
He might be able to tell us.
And then their cume fire.
I can have one of them down.
Proceeded in thirty thousand five hundred ninety dollars.
I don't remember ever sending them much. If I have, it's been a while.
Do you have the fire contract amounts and who? Because you said you had a total of what, one?
We had one hundred and ninety.
Hundred ninety?
That's what it has been in the past, the last couple of years.
And that probably, I bet that includes, that includes N H K. There are like eighty-something, I think. Oops, sorry.
Is he walking over?
Oh, he doesn't wanna come over.
So there's N H K, Washington Union.
Jackson.
Center, Jackson.
What's it, um?
Union's north.
Union, yeah, Union, Jackson, Washington.
Washington's west.
That's, that's.
Jackson, who's the other one?
South.
Jackson's south.
Washington Union, Center Jackson, and N H K. I think that's it.
Washington, Union, Center, Jackson.
Yeah, okay.
Do we cover a big portion of Jackson?
All of it.
All of it.
And a chunk in the interstate off forty-seven.
Okay.
So the, the thought process there is we cover over ninety square miles because of these township contracts, which is why we have to have so many firemen. But those township contracts do not pay an equitable amount compared to our Frankfurt taxpayers for the same service.
But I think we maxed them out. I think where they're maxed, though.
Well, then it begs the question, is it in our best interest to contract with them?
Because I think they are. I think they're maxed on their, um, cume and their. The only one that wasn't was, um, Washington, maybe, but then I thought we got them to come up to go ahead and do that because you have to file something like in advance.
It's just a little different now. I mean, we're talking about not being able to man a brand-new station, but we're subsidizing other government entities with fire services. The only official way around that is to enter into a fire territory with them. That way they can increase their tax levels, but that does make you lose control from the top.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not a fan of fire territories. Just me, just me.
You guys provide financial services for any? Do you guys provide financial services for any municipalities with a territory?
Yeah, and we've, we actually help probably two to three, or I think four every year, establish fire territories throughout the state.
Generally, do they work?
Um, yeah. Mainly, the, the reason I see them occur is funding issues. And a lot of times, it's the rural fire departments or townships that need it more than, you know, the municipality.
Right.
And it's, it's a way to reset your levy to, you know, the desired need. The state, Senate Bill One, just, just affected that a little bit. They capped the rate at forty cents. So a fire territory can't be more than forty cent tax rate.
But we're not capped? Are we capped with a municipal fire rate?
Um, no, but you're kind of capped in the sense that you can only grow by your max levy. Um, and how, how the fire territory would work is, if the city decided to participate in one, the city's maximum levy, whatever portion of the fire budget's in the general fund, the total budget, there'd be an adjustment to your maximum levy to decrease that fire portion, because you're no longer funding it. So, I mean, there's a, there's a decrease in revenue. We have a decrease in expenses.
But you have to reach out to a, a lot of other taxpayers to make that forty percent pay off then?
You could. It, it depends what their current tax rate is in those townships. You know, if they're at five to ten cents now, what's forty cents get you, the assessed value in those areas?
What I remember in two thousand and ten was our sixty-seven cent rate was going to go down to forty-six with the territory that was proposed.
And you have some of them in that territory that, Jackson.
Wanda's gathering the fire contracts.
Okay.
Bringing them down.
Oh, and on CCD, I don't think, we start, stopped talking about this when we left for lunch earlier, but the one twenty-two-five number should go in for the one forty-seven or whatever you had in there. You got that? Okay.
Well, I guess while we're waiting for the chief, can we agree on these other cuts? To get this, get this down, so we have a better idea when we're talking to the chief? So we heard, we heard two hundred and thirteen thousand to cut those fire, or the police cars in half, roughly. At seventy-one thousand apiece with, with equipment.
So you're, you're cutting down the equipment line and the car line?
Yeah.
Correct.
And then the, uh, one of the two fire trucks, fifty-five, and then the community development director, part-time, or twenty-three. So that gets us where we got to pull a little over two hundred thousand out still, which is two men. Now, the only thing to consider there is, you give the two, because you can technically afford it, then we enter the next year's budget process already at a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit on top of what they're projecting in the eight-hundred-thousand range, so.
So is that, okay, is that considering the change at the Parks Department? Or are you, are you considering a change?
What, what kind of savings did we get from the Parks Department?
If, if we don't have the zookeepers after the first year.
I don't know. I, I didn't hear you say pull them out.
What we were talking about was.
We're talking about it. I don't know.
Just not replacing them when, because you thought they might be.
Yeah, or do we?
Might happen, yeah.
I don't know that. I mean, they might go, you know, they might hop on that deal, you know what I mean? Just stay on as a labor.
And then we decide.
I think, I think we've got to put that out there to them soon.
I think we, I think we need to offer it to them.
Yeah.
And the fire ladder equipment is out in PS Lit as well, right?
Offer them the position, starting, like, September first, you're going to become a labor.
He's got, he's got that new engine coming this year.
To keep busy.
My guess is he needs to have that money, so.
And just see how that goes.
Take it or leave.
And if, and if they.
So we can clarify that.
Make that decision and.
Okay.
Decide to leave. Just don't replace them.
Yeah. Because we still have. Come on.
And the other, one of the other things we had discussed was, uh, in Riverboat, the, this won't help general, but the, um, contract services.
For what?
For, in Riverboat.
The contract services?
Yeah, it's twenty thousand. There was talk about it.
From where?
Riverboat, page fourteen.
It's contractual services.
It's, it's building services, and it's.
Use for, oh, thank you.
I just, I just want them, I want them to use, we, we have to have ADA compliance. We have to.
Yeah, I thought that was considered a must.
Yeah, we have to. So, you know, done. What happened is, what? Got us back behind is because he kept saying he didn't have enough money. Well, I don't want, that's not an excuse. You lose millions of dollars in grant money if you're not ADA compliant, so.
Yeah, we got to have that.
Did, did we pull out the forty-some thousand on the equipment for the new truck?
Well, that has to be asked of him, how much he needs this year for.
Yeah, okay. I knew that was one of them.
I thought he said.
So I say let's leave the, that, if you can, the contractual ADA, if you can. And you said to leave the physicals, correct, for the fire?
I think we all agreed on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely.
Mayor, I think if you pitched the SS four A to the RDC, it would probably go pretty well if it's found to be legal.
Yeah, and I may have, I mean, I think it might be nice to have, like, Brian or Kim, because they're the ones that's been working on it. They would know.
Hi, walk in, you're right up here, huh?
Yeah.
How are you? I am still doing well. Still alive, so. Okay.
Still looking down the grass, are you?
So far.
Can you clarify a couple of things for us?
Yes.
Uh, forty-four men currently?
Yes.
And one of them is Monday through Friday training officer.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Um, and then your forty thousand on the equipment, you know, you talked about the fire hose and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need half of that this year for the new Engine Three?
Uh, we could do half of that.
The other half would be for the, the ladder equipment?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it'll take, it always takes a lot more than that. I'll just use some examples of different things. You know, when the new ladder or new, um, quint comes, I mean, you got to figure there's going to be extra case equipment on there, and I can tell you that right now is about thirty-five thousand dollars just by itself. Um, you add the hose with another six hundred, or six thousand dollars just for five inches, six hundred feet. Plus, you're going to have all your crosslays that you're going to have. Those are inch and three-quarter, two and a half. So you're looking at probably another six thousand dollars or more just to, to outfit that. Nozzles are about fifteen hundred dollars apiece, so typical fire truck, we're going to have about six nozzles on there. So when you start doing the math, I mean, again, it's just, you know, it's just part of being in the fire service. It's just going to cost quite a bit of money.
So you, you need more than half of that for the new Engine Three?
The new Engine Three, the only difference with, um, for next year would mainly be that we have the spare engine, because we'll be able to take some of that and utilize it on that, on that new apparatus that shows up. Well, the problem's going to be is when we get to the new ladder truck that you're going, we, we ain't going to be able to rob Peter to pay Paul. We're going to have to actually replace those items and put them on the truck. So that's where I said, if we dropped it a little bit this year, that would be understandable, because, you know, we can use stuff off of our spare engine now to replace that. There'll be some items we're still going to have to purchase for the new truck. Um, but ultimately, sorry about that. Guess I better shut this off. Um, but ultimately, you know, we're just kind of looking at the fact that over the next couple of years, with all this apparatus coming in, that there's just going to have to be supplies we're going to buy.
Yeah.
So just us being, you know, trying to be more forward with everybody, let everybody know where we're at and how, how this process is going to work for us over the next couple of years.
And then can you inform the council your current manpower per station, not, not including what you're projecting for the new station? How, how many men's on shift?
So we have fourteen people per shift, uh, most generally. Uh, my shift has fifteen people per shift. But then, once you start taking into account, you know, the time off, vacation time, sick, hurt, people getting injured, um, our numbers dwindle pretty, pretty rapidly. Example would be, is the fire we had this morning. Um, we had ten personnel at fire headquarters and then the two people at each one of the outstations. That was fourteen people responding on that call. At fourteen people, excuse me, with just, just a garage slash apartment fire, fourteen people were there. I had to call four people in this morning just to cover the city of Frankfurt. So at one point, we had zero people available to cover the city of Frankfurt, because every single person was being utilized. And so, once you start looking at the math of everything, they will tell you, and I don't know if any of you have ever seen our Fire Department Facebook posts, but we also try to advertise a little bit about what the federal government says is just required for a small city. And what they require right now is just for a single-family dwelling alone, you should have fifteen people on shift every day. If you start to look at what you would need if, um, you know, if your store was on fire, or if one of the factories, they're saying there should be a minimum of thirty to thirty-five people on duty every single day. I know that we can't meet those numbers. That's, that's the common sense, um, you know, the size of our city, so we do the best we can. But as you had probably seen in the budgets, one of the things we asked for was twenty-five thousand more dollars just to increase the overtime, just because of the fact that, you know, as things continue to grow, our area continues to grow, we're still dwindling on a lot of more personnel, which is obviously going to cause us to have a shortfall, not only for the new territories that we're going to have, but also just for the citizens of the city of Frankfurt in general. Um, normal, normal daily operations, um, just so everyone knows, our minimum staffing for the most part is, we'll have three personnel that's on our engine truck. We will have two personnel that's on our squad truck. We will have a minimum of two personnel on our ladder truck right now at headquarters. We have two personnel on the command truck, two on Engine Two and two on Engine Three. That would be our, what we consider our minimum staffing, um, every single day. And that's just enough operators to operate, uh, the apparatus. Um, and once again, National, um, Fire Protection Agency, um, all of the state, or, excuse me, the federal unions, they all will tell you that you should have no less than a minimum of four people on a fire apparatus every single day, which we have never met that in our entire time, and that's why I don't come to you every meeting saying, we need ten more people. We need ten more people. Um, obviously, I think everybody here knows, you know, my goal is, I don't want us as a city to, I'm sorry, I don't know. Somebody keeps calling me. You know, I don't want us as a city to, you know, look back and be like, wow, we, we can't even man a new station that we're building. And that's one of my biggest concerns. I mean, currently, you know, every single year, I've definitely came to the council and said, here's what we need to get to where we need to get to. Every single year, it definitely gets cut. Um, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, I know two years ago, everybody said, well, we're, we've got a long time until we get there. Well, us getting there is there. Uh, you're literally looking at the potential of twelve months, and it's going to be there. And, you know, politically speaking, I mean, it's going to look awful funny to us if we have a brand-new fire station sitting out there and we have nobody that will service that territory any more than we are now. And so, I just want to make sure that you guys have to do your job, totally understand, totally respect it. But obviously, I need to do my job to make sure the city knows where we need to be and how we need to be there, um, and why it's so important. There's many, many opportunities out there for, you know, myself to sit down with every one of you, um, go over things. I can always have, you know, the state officials come in, and I think they would tell you all the same things. That Frankfurt, city of Frankfurt's understaffed. Um, it's understaffed based on the population that we have, and it's been understaffed for fifty years. I mean, it's, it's no secret that it's understaffed, but us opening a new station, we're going to have to, if we don't start meeting those expectations now, I know every, pretty much every year, the council says, we're going to have a plan, and I have still be upfront with everybody here. I've never really yet heard a plan. I've put several plans in place to replace individuals that were leaving or retiring without having to cost the city more money, and we're just trying to get to where we need to get to.
Would you say your minimum crew complement was to maintain your vehicles? Was it twelve? Is that what you came up with?
Yeah.
So you, you're into overtime. If you lose that twelfth man, you're definitely paying overtime to get an off-shifter in.
Yeah, and that's the hardest part for us, because, um, one person gets injured, and, and we're down. I mean, we're down for a long time. We looked at, I can tell you, I, I don't have the exact numbers with me, because I didn't bring anything with me but myself. But, um, I'd have to go back through and look at the numbers, but I know alone this year that we've had three individuals off for surgeries. And once, once what I call peak vacation season gets there, we're paying overtime. We do a lot of time where we try to get down to minimum as much as we can, if it's just for a few hours, even a little bit below minimum for a few hours if I needed to, you know, for somebody that had an emergency for, you know, an hour. But ultimately, you know, I don't want to sit and charge the city every single time, you know, there's fifteen minutes of overtime. But you had today, you had four personnel called in overtime. Fire started about three forty-five this morning. We finished, finally wrapped up about seven fifteen this morning, seven twenty. So you had four people there, and then the off, on-duty crew that's going off, they end up getting paid because it's extended past their time that they've worked. So it is, it does, it does cost a lot of money. I mean, there's, there's no, no question that running a fire service is very, very, very expensive.
And Matt, hearing everything you're saying, and I would have been in these meetings, and we're keep trying to, okay, next year, we're going to be able to do it. Understand, Senate Bill One threw us for a loop, so we're sitting here scrambling, figuring out how to do all this.
And I, and, and Mr. Beers, I totally understand. I do. I really understand where everybody's coming from. But in my opinion, House Bill One wasn't here four years ago when we started talking about it, wasn't here three years ago, wasn't here two years ago. And, and honestly, it's just the truth. Every year, it's been cut back to where, you know, we ask for this many to get to the amount that we have, and it's like, oh, no, we're not going to do it now. We're going to do it next year. Next year comes, and, oh, we can't do it now. We're going to do it next year. And then I hear, oh, we're going to, we're going to come up with a plan. So, just, you know, I respect it. I understand where we're at financially. Don't, at any point, think that I'm discouraged because that I think that we're going to have all the money we need. But I also got to make sure that everybody here publicly knows that, why these things are important to us, and what has brought us to this point is not all about House Bill One. It is all about the, the process that we have came to get here, and we're still short those manpower, that manpower.
Do you understand that the last two years, we've been in deficit spending on our.
I do understand, but I also understand that, you know...
I understand what you're saying too.
Sure. And it is, it is a deficit. But when you look at the deficit, I 100% agree with having issues with funding. But the last place that we, any of us, I think, would wanna see is our public safety, police and fire have issues with that funding. Um, I'm not advocating for everybody else to get all kinds of cuts, but I'm just trying to make a, a statement that, you know, one of the things that makes this city great is our public safety. I mean, you look at law enforcement, how much they've worked hard to, to get our city safe. You look at the Fire Department and see how the Fire Departments are down right now, or the, excuse me, the fires are down right now. You know, how our manpower is, again, increasing their training, working extremely hard for the city. So I think that's one of the things that I look at is, I agree, you know, with Mr. Warthen just as well, that I understand that we've had deficits. Um, but it does become the factor of what's more important to us is it the citizens of Frankfurt that is being protected by police and fire? Or is it, you know, having a pretty park? Or is it, you know, having multiple people? I mean, it's just, the fact of the matter is, is at some point, we as a city will have to make a decision on what's gonna be the most important. And luckily enough, that's your guys' job, not mine.
Is the only reason you haven't been running a three-man crew out of Station 2 and 3 is there's not enough room for another bed?
No, um, you could put another bed in there. Um, I know that when your dad was working the fire station, it was still a three-man station at Station 2. Station 3 is a lot bigger of a station. It, it could, it was a three-man station at one point as well. So absolutely, you could, you can still run a three-man station, um, at Station 2 and Station 3. Since I've been hired, so I can only speak for the last 26 and a half years or so, it's always been two men and two men and then everybody else is at Headquarters. And I know that we have a pretty daunting task of what we're gonna do when the new station opens. I mean, we're looking at the possibility of having five to six personnel at Headquarters right now if we don't continue to get the manpower that we need. And then to me, once again, you have your highest population located, you know, within a mile and a half of the, of the Headquarters. You have some of the biggest, you know, downtown, some of the stores is gonna need those manpower. And if we're not getting the manpower soon, we're gonna be distributing people out that's gonna be very thin. And then I will honestly tell you the liability at some point for the city and I will be upfront. Um, you can check with OSHA, you can check with NFPA, you can check with, um, INOSH, you can check with all of them. But one of the biggest things is gonna be is that if you do, if the city doesn't staff it properly, someone gets hurt or someone gets killed, they're going to come back, someone's gonna come back to get the city. No matter how much more planning we try to do and try to make sure that they get their masks tested every year and the pumps get tested every year, if something major happens, the first question they're gonna be asking is, you know, is things up to date? Are your policies up to date and was staffing proper? And so that's why probably for me as a fire chief, I always try to make sure that you guys are aware of, every year at budget times, where we stand with personnel and why it's important.
Well, there's certainly always a risk, I believe, in your guys' profession. You know, it's noble that you do it. Um, but as Ben said, we, we definitely have a ceiling here on, on what we can afford. So I'm just gonna put you on the spot and ask you, what if? If you were at 15 men per shift, how would you distribute it among your stations? With Station 4 open?
Um, honestly, the only option there would be, you would have a two-man station at Station 4. It's the only option you would have.
You just have one less man at Headquarters?
You would have one less man at Headquarters. But once again, you start taking away this vacation, sick times, you're gonna be at the point to where you're gonna be running four people at Headquarters and two people at the other stations. And then now, we've actually lost personnel because of the factor of having that fourth station. Would be, would be what I would kinda bring to that conclusion of how that would look.
And what is the logistics of that fourth station? So you have an engine out there. That, that engine would come to town upon certain parameters for other engines out?
Yeah, um, it would, it'll be coming to town. Um, as I told everybody this morning, I mean, as far as all the logistics of how Station 4 is gonna run, I don't have that yet because I wanted to wait till groundbreaking came. I wanted to wait to find out what kinda personnel we have. Because if I walk out here today and you say, we're not giving you anybody else, then I have to start trying to put plans together on how we're gonna even operate. You know, how that station's gonna be up and running, what type of equipment, what type of manpower we're gonna have. So to give you a, a good, solid answer, my best solid answer is, once again, we're very resilient at the Fire Department. I feel like we've had to be over the years. And I can assure you that we will have to figure something out. But that doesn't mean that we're not gonna continue to fight and, you know, start getting the public involved to fight for us as well. I mean, trust me, I know Isaac's been in a meeting. I've told him, this is needed. You need to get ahold of your council members. You need to let them know that we have to have this personnel, you know? And that's, that's kinda where I feel like it's really important for us to, you know, have these discussions so that way you guys at least understand where I'm coming from and what our intentions, you know, will be moving forward just as well. But I just wanted to say that I don't have a 100% guarantee. Will we make something work? I'm sure we will. But I also know that, you know, being in the political field that you guys are, that opening a new station and close to election times and people are wondering, well, why do we use all this tax money for something we can't even staff now? I mean, that's just, that's the truth behind it.
You're just blaming it on the previous administration?
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, we all, we all knew it and we all said, you know, once I took over the, you know, as I told everybody at the very beginning when I took over, this was something they set up way before me. So, you know, all I got was it thrown in my lap and said, here you go. And I know the last four years, we fought every year to try to get what we need for it. So what you guys choose to do, I, I understand you guys choose to do it. But it doesn't mean that I can't at least fight for what we need.
It doesn't mean we like it.
Yeah, but...
Well, the way the chief has described, and I think what he has described is that he absolutely has to have a minimum of 15 men per crew. Or we're gonna see skyrocketing overtime. And we'll probably still see an increase. And some of this, we can't help. Our, our arms are tied behind our back because we were forced to put that station in.
Sure.
I wish we would've delayed it a, a year, but it's, but it's happening. So, um, the, again, the 15 men, if you take the chief out, that would require two additional men to be hired. And that's about approximately 100 grand per...
Right, yes.
By the time you get the equipment and all that.
You know, and our hopes, I, I, why wouldn't you say hopes? I'll be honest with everybody. What we've really, what I've done diligently, you know, in my team is we really have looked at all those options. And we've also looked at the fact that, you know, just like that, you, you give us two personnel. I mean, they take a year to train. I mean, a minimum of a year to train. We bring those two personnel in, new station opens sometime, what'd it say? You know, um, early fall next year. You know, we're, we're still a little behind the gun. But in between there, we're doing our best to always try to save the money that we don't have to spend on overtime. Um, I, I can, I think you guys all know here, then all the years that I've been the fire chief, I don't know that I've really came back and asked you for an increase of overtime. We've always done our best to stay in the budget. I talked to the mayor the other day. This is gonna be the first year I'm probably gonna have to come back and ask for a little bit more because we're running low already. So again, we're very, very resilient and frugal sometimes. So we do our best.
Which that is what happens. Then you, if you don't have the staff, then your overtime's gonna go up this while.
And you fair, our overtime right now is at 200,000. It's been that way, um, since 2000 and I think in 2022, I wanna say is when we changed the budget and added another $50,000 to make it 200. If I'm not mistaken, in 2021, it was, it was 150,000 in overtime money. We raised it to 200. We've been at 200 since. And then this year, obviously, I asked for 225.
Oh, yeah, I know. How much did you spend, do you know?
Um, we, uh, Carol would know. I think she's looking right now.
134,000 in June.
Yeah, and that's my concern. I do have, uh, two people going on, possibly going off work here soon. One's a shoulder surgery and, um, I think another one's a carpal tunnel surgery coming up, so...
150,000.
So we have 50,000 left for the rest, 49,000.
Yeah, you have 49 left.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you said 150.
For the rest of this year.
I said 150, Spanish.
Yeah, yeah.
So those people go off, they're using up their vacation, sick time?
Uh, the, so we do operate differently than I think than a lot of other departments. If they go off on injury, sick leave, however the case may be, if their vacation is already scheduled during that timeframe, then they lose their vacation. Um, I know I've had many people fight with me that they didn't think that's right, but they lose their vacation. I'll use a prime example. Um, our Captain Klein, he got injured. I don't know if you guys knew this, but he got injured about the middle of June. Um, fell through a hole, broke, um, four of his ribs, two of them in two different places. He just came back to work Saturday. Um, during that timeframe, he had two weeks of vacation that was already scheduled because we schedule ours a year in advance. He had two weeks of it and he lost it because he's off. Um, you know, people don't feel like that's fair, but...
You mean, he had a whole two month?
Yeah, could you imagine? And I, I mean, I mean this not to be funny, but I do mean it to show how the Fire Department is, is... Could you imagine that happening in somebody else's department? Because I guarantee they'd be fighting to get those two weeks back. And our guys just understand for the most part that, you know, we schedule these in October, November for the entire next year. Something happens to you during that time, it just happens and you lose it.
That's what it is.
Yeah. Well, we'd go that far, but just the way we do things.
Did you, do you know what that...
So your overtime this year is already 150?
Yeah, they've already spent 150 over two.
Oh, yeah, they've already spent 150.
That's one and a half new hires.
Yep. 49,000 left.
I'm thinking the same thing.
That's one and a half new hires.
Yeah, I mean, that's what happens. If you're gonna staff it down, then you're gonna pay it out in overtime, so...
What percentage of that's mandatory?
Um, I can tell you the, the numbers and the numbers for mandatory overtime for all the firefighters, we sit right around the 39 to 42,000.
42 that we're paying every year?
Yes, no matter what.
Tell me on center township, what they pay?
What they pay for their fire contract? They pay, they pay the lease.
That's what I thought.
Engine 1. And then they also...
Okay, that's what I was trying to add.
Of course, they also bought Engine 2, so they've already...
Okay.
They bought Engine 2, um, and then obviously...
Engine 1, so we don't get any money from them.
Correct.
We have NHK, Washington Jackson Union.
Correct.
Yeah, center township owns part of the trucks, don't they?
Well, center township technically owns, um, both of the tankers. They own the grass rig and they own Engine 2. That is what they own. Generally, they're very good about, once they want to buy and replace another one, they give, they, they donate it back to the city for us to have. And those are some of the intentions on our plans for Station 4. Um, as I told you, they wanna buy a new grass rig. So our plan is, is hopefully they will donate the current grass truck to us and we can at least put it out there to have a second grass rig. Um, same thing with the tanker. Because obviously, center township, I can respect the fact that they don't want their equipment sitting out in somebody else's township. It's not paid by them, it's paid by the center township. So everything at center township is kept here in the city.
You might be off a little bit on that. I'm not sure. NHK's 84, Washington's 14, Jackson's 72, Union's 49. Of course, Center's 92, but that doesn't count because we don't see that. It's paid directly to the lease.
What's, what's the lease payment currently?
92.
92 a year.
And I'm pretty sure that, that's about up.
So what's that get you to, 220? Not very good. I did have to figure it, 220? So you're up a little. What'd you say, 1?
95.
Okay. 25,000. And is that, are those all still in effect?
They all expire.
Uh, we applied for seven, which was what staffing we would need. Min, that would be the, considered our minimum staffing once the quit gets here. Um, I did, I, I can show you, I have it in my notes today to send you the copy or send everybody here a copy of that grant to show that it was submitted back on July 3rd.
That took forever.
I feel comfortable with the grant, but I can assure you, there's no guarantees. And the reason I tell you I feel comfortable is, we work with the State IAFF on this grant. Um, we did all of the legwork, we got all the numbers, we did all the narratives and then we actually submitted to IAFF. And they actually went through it at the state level, sent us back some changes that we needed to make in our narratives or if there was something financial we thought we needed to make changes with. We got that back, made the changes, submitted it back to them and they replied back that they felt like it was a pretty solid, um, grant.
What's the terms of that grant again?
That grant is a lot different now than what it used to be. Now it's like a 50%, 7, excuse me, I think it's 70%, 50% and then 25% is what they pay.
For three years and then the...
For the three years and the fourth year.
You'd have to maintain your staffing level for those three years?
You would have to maintain, um, I'll have to go back through the, yeah, to be past those. I think they require you to maintain your personnel for at least 10 years.
Oh, is it? I thought it was three, but...
Yeah, I think, I think once the three years is up, I think you have seven more years that they would require you to maintain it, um, that staffing level. If we would've known the data center stuff was gonna be a thing and the lettuce place, we could've put that in our narrative. That could've helped us out quite a bit with funding, but who knows how that's gonna work out either.
Lettuce is counting.
Still in township?
Yeah, still be in the township, so, uh, but that's, that's the terms of it. And like I said, I can send it to you. I, it'll be a big file, so I'll, I'll do my best to get it to everybody. But it'll be a pretty sizable little file that you have to do.
And when did you say they would know?
There is no date. Um, I could just tell you that in, in my past time here at the Fire Department, I used to write grants for the city of Frankfurt all the time for, um, the fire service and was successful every single year that I wrote grants. And I can tell you that typically, there's a six-month period before they announce anything after submission. Um, the grant will leave here, it'll go to Emmitsburg, Maryland. Emmitsburg, Maryland will get different committees set up and they will spend, you know, weeks slash a month of different committees going over each aspect of it, highlighting things that does or doesn't work in their algorithm. And then once they get all through that, then they start looking at what their top priorities are down to the low priorities. With a safer, um, grant, obviously, it's only there for funding firefighters. So there's not a lot of things they have to look at to say, this is more important. It may look more at the rural areas this year, may look at more urban areas, you know, next year. It just depends on what...
What their priorities are.
It is, it's gonna be depending on what their priorities are.
So we have an option not to accept the grant?
Right.
It'll only come back fully or, or just...
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, so my question is, let's say we put on some manpower in this budget.
Sure.
And they don't make their determination until January. Did that set our staffing level at that point? That we have to add seven on to accept the grant?
Our staffing would be, uh, good question, would be from when we submit it. So that we, we're gonna submit what our staffing is currently and then we give them all the funding for the next, the projection for the next three years of where we would be with the additional seven personnel. Um, I can assure you, again, I hate to be that Debbie Downer with it, but I can assure you that even if it comes a first round, you that even if it comes a first round, we wouldn't see any money probably until July of next year. Um, just the way that they'll, they'll award us and say, hey, you're awarded, but then they're gonna give us a certain amount of time to work with the councils, to make sure that we have a plan in place, how we're gonna fund it, they, they'll send something to Carol, and Carol will get something that says, you know, which she'll get that information from you that says, can we afford this? And then once the city says yes, we accept it, then we're bound by that, um, for the next three years.
We could get up to seven, not necessarily seven, correct?
This one is a little, that, that's a, it's a great question, and there's not, I don't have a great answer for you. Um, it tells you in the grant guidelines that you need to put in the maximum amount of people that you need to service your city, and that's what they ask for. I don't know if they come back and say, we'll give you four. I don't know if they'll come back and say, we'll give you seven, if they'll give you, we think you guys did such a great job, we'll give you twenty, I don't know. Um, I just know the truth is, is that they tell you, you have to submit what you want on the grant. I don't think it would be any less. I know the police departments used to do that, where they could submit for five people and they'd come back and say, we're gonna give you two. Um, you gotta keep in mind with the, uh, federal government and, you know, the, the fire service, that they set a priority, and again, all those priorities about how many personnel should be on shift every day to fight this fire, this fire, how much per population, they stick to those numbers pretty hard, and that's what they, they utilize for us, and the fire service say, this is how many people you need, so if you ask for seven, then we know you need seven.
I guess my question would be, what happens if we can't afford the last three or two?
Pay it back.
If we don't have the money to pay?
Well, I mean.
That, that's, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, and I, I understand, and respectfully, what I'd have to say is, I guess that's your choice, to figure out, I, I mean, I, we, we know we gotta do what we gotta do.
Yes.
We know we have to work within our means, it ain't no different in my checkbook at home, I have to live within my means, I know that.
If we get that grant, we just gotta do it, we just gotta figure out how to do it.
Exactly, exactly, and you figure, even at this particular moment, I don't exactly have the numbers, so, I apologize, I didn't bring nothing with me, I just came myself, um, but, you figure it's seven people, you know, at seventy percent of their salary, we're talking thirty percent, so you're looking at, I don't know, maybe three hundred thousand dollars for, no, it'd be less than that, I think, be a lot less than that, but anyhow, you're talking, let's say a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the, two-ten, okay? Two-ten for the first year, and so on and so forth, so.
Double that to next year?
Yeah, 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 and it's, I, I get it, it's tough. I don't wanna have to be in your situation just as much as a, I'm sure you don't wanna be in my situation.
I think this satisfied my questions, bud.
Good. Anyone else have any questions?
No, I agree with what, in fact, we do need more firemen, but again, the question is, how many afford?
How many can we do?
I mean, this, as our one.
Not that I'm saying it's anything, but let's be realistic, I mean, every city in the state of Indiana is going through this right now, and you can't imagine that this is going to be a lingering thing that lasts, there's, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be enough political pull out there that things are gonna have to start changing, and they're gonna recognize that. You know, I know the biggest thing for us, and I think Reedy brought it up, you know, is the county's the one that's gonna be able to set the rate, um, you know, for, what'd you say, fire and EMS, or fire and EMS, you know, so, in, in all reality, not that I'm trying to take things away from anybody else in the city, but that at least gives us an advantage to gain some more money, 'cause if, my understanding is, that's based on population, um, which would then.
Yeah, square mileage.
Square mileage, um, we're a hundred and eight square miles is what City of Frankfurt's covering right now, so if you look at the size of the county versus what we're covering, there's really no question in my mind that we should be able to get about fifty percent of whatever they're going to do countywide. Again, not saying I have zero idea, 'cause I'm not, Reedy, I have no idea on the numbers, but I would think that'd be a considerable amount. That's, that's the, that's the thing.
So we don't, we really can't say, we get this much?
We could, we could run an EMS service, and then people'd be paying us. I mean, that's, that's the truth. Eighty-four percent of the calls, they're done, and EMS is in the city limits or territories that Frankfurt Fire covers.
I'll save that for another day.
Then you'd need more personnel.
Yeah, hey, I'm not doing my due diligence, if I don't at least get everything I need off my mind, and at least throw those options, I'm not saying that's something anybody wants to do, but always something. Okay. Well, if you guys have any more questions, feel free to reach out, I don't know if it's gonna be much more tonight, I'm sure you guys are about done for the night, aren't you?
If we get done tonight, we might not have to come back in the morning, so we might tough it out a little.
There you go, there you go. Yeah, you're welcome.
That's okay, because every time you go to restroom, I go out and take three drinks off a cigarette.
Matt, thanks for coming back.
Seven or three seconds, so do I think?
Yeah, but it would only be the seven. So, so to get us to where we needed to, we needed seven personnel, um, that is by, I'm gonna say July of twenty-seventh, we needed seven personnel to amend the new apparatus appropriate.
So it's not four plus the seven?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Have a good afternoon, evening, whichever it is.
So, what's everybody thinking? The problem is the cumulative amount of increased deficit. Yeah. That's, that's the problem.
I was mentioning to Nicky, you know, prior to the system, the pyre system, the building line, the way, you know, the fund projections were structured, hypothetically, the state grant was setting, you know, firefighters, seventy percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent. That additional funding to that grant would, yeah, the city would still have to, you know, pay, you know, a portion of that, but when that is falling off, it would be the NHK adjustment from the max eleven come on, and you may have been able to.
That was the plan.
As far as, you know, assuming the safer grant at the seventy percent, starting in twenty-six, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then it entirely falls off, and then that's when it'd really be an impact from the city. It's a concern. So I'm pretty much reiterating.
So when NHK, when the NHK comes into the city, then they don't longer pay fire contracts, right?
No, but they pay the tax rate.
Yeah, we, we changed it in twenty-four-eight, but, but you'll get an annexation adjustment to your, to maximum of your property.
So what would require protection, uh, kind of, perhaps increase our property tax revenue?
So, is that bounce out, or did we actually get a gain on that?
You get a gain.
So what did we decide?
We haven't.
Haven't decided anything, yeah.
Oh, I didn't miss anything?
Well, do you suggest, Mayor?
Huh?
Do you suggest?
I don't know what to do.
We can hire two men and still do our balance, but that doesn't fix next year, without an SB one amendment of some sort, we are going to be looking at a million dollars, we'll have to cut next year.
Seriously? If we put two on, if we put two on, we're gonna be a million?
They said eight hundred and change, start the deficit, and then we're gonna add a couple hundred grand to the payroll for a year.
Although, the eight hundred, but we will have an, an increase for, uh, the, the property taxes too next year, to offset some of that.
We should, shouldn't we?
The, the levy will go up.
Yeah.
The levy will go up some next year, so, I mean, it, it's gonna mean another year of probably no raises, but.
We're not getting anything really from Jefferson right now, even, I know, even though we have baited that in, it's, it's not that much SS value, I mean, we're not getting much, probably South, or what's it called, Meadow Brook, it's not.
The one good thing is, you know, e- even though it may have sounded like a bad idea to enter into that agreement with the county, to give them the ten-year delay on annexation, we get a hundred percent of the tax rate right off the bat, not, not the fire rate right off the bat, so at least, anything that comes in will immediately start paying, that's a one, one-year delay, obviously, but, uh, a- at least we get that, as opposed to them asking for a abatement that we're giving the first couple of years a hundred percent.
Yeah.
When's the abatement up on Con Agar?
Ten years from now.
Is that next year, or this year? Or when was that?
Well, I mean, the RDC kicks in with the.
Yeah.
The extra ten years on their bond payment. So they got their taxes abated a hundred percent for ten years, and then they get their bond paid for ten years, right? I'm not.
Really?
I'd have to, I'd have to ask Gary.
We get screwed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure did.
Don't they go, it's gonna come to you, didn't they? Don't know more employees than we do.
And, and employees they have aren't Con Agar employees, they're, they're leased employees, so they don't have to pay as much.
Well, I guess I would ask, is this, uh, you know, we plow through this discussion a little bit longer, we don't have a reason to come back in the morning, all right?
So, so at noon, Gary and, um, Gary and Nick Kyle and Alicia will be here. What do we do with that? It's already says at eight in the morning, you've already advertised, can we just put it, can you put a notice up that says we'll start at noon or something, or?
Yes, I believe Alicia says as long as we post it in an obvious place, like on the.
Yeah.
Outside of the front door, in the location where we are, that it, it will suffice.
Why, why don't we all, I don't, I don't think anybody's made a decision, why don't we all just think about this a little bit?
You wanna come back a little bit before noon?
A little bit before noon, and maybe at eleven o'clock or something.
Yeah, I agree.
Just, just for a half hour or something like that, let's make a decision, let's move on. All right?
I think, uh, pretty well we got it now, but we just gotta, you know, think about it overnight.
Do you feel like, do you feel like it's the firefighters, I mean, that's, that's the issue right now, you, are you?
What's the biggest chunk?
Is everybody comfortable?
But not major like that.
I mean, I wish we could afford to give them four, but right now.
Me too, I mean.
At least give them half that.
Rather than have Mickey and Jerry come back, could we give them a, a couple of scenarios to run that they could email us, so that we could see the summary sheet impact for the two scenarios, or however many you want?
Well, we're gonna drive back and see.
How about the two, uh?
You guys need to come back and see us, don't you?
Yeah, we don't need them tomorrow.
Yes, and they have a pretty high hourly rate.
Yeah. Hey, Gary, Gary's coming tomorrow, so.
Real Gary.
Real Jerry.
What time is it?
What time you guys think?
Well, the, Gary and Nick will be here at, at noon.
At noon, okay.
We can be here at eleven?
Eleven?
Ten-thirty or whatever.
Ten-thirty or eleven, eleven?
Let's make it eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven, okay.
We'll take them.
Taylor's like, I have to get up again tomorrow. Eleven tomorrow.
We're coming at eleven, and then the, then those guy, other guys will be here at twelve.
Right, and then, anything that, are you gonna send us revised? Are you gonna run them in?
I can print them out, if, what, they, they can send me the summary sheet, is that acceptable to everyone? I was looking for some consensus with that, okay?
Just the summary, and then once we make a decision, run the whole thing.
Yep.
Do you want a couple of scenarios in the summaries?
I would not mind having everything. Maybe Carol and I could have everything, all the changes, in case there's any questions.
Yeah.
And then a summary, if the others want a summary, but I'd like to.
You want it based off the three percent scenario, or?
What do you wanna do?
One percent.
One percent.
One percent with how many firefighters?
Two.
Two.
One fire truck.
What about, we were talking about all the, all the, uh, part-timers getting no, no raise, and maybe the council getting, council getting no raise, I don't know if anybody else, what do you think of that?
Well, the part-timers don't get a raise anyways.
Not gonna get a raise?
No, they, they're paid on that scale of.
Okay.
Currently, it's sixteen to nineteen.
When we budget for them, we just say that it's anywhere from sixteen to nineteen, and when they're hired in, and.
For example, the park, the park changes that we made, we based it on what they're currently making with no raise.
Yeah, no raise for, like, Board of Works too, but.
And as a council, I don't think we need one.
Yeah, we don't think we need one.
At all.
Yeah, I'll save.
So the scenario, so, the scenario I'm hearing is one percent with two firefighters, plus all of the things we pulled out today, like the three police cars, the police equipment, um, I don't have my little.
One of the fire.
These are development records.
One of the fire vehicles, and the CD part-time position.
And what about the SS four A, fifty grand, should that come out? Assuming it goes to the.
If RDC would take it, I don't know.
Do you leave it in to be safe?
What to do for now, I mean, we.
Leave it in, then pursue it, is the next meeting.
Is there any other scenario you want to see since?
Well, I, I wouldn't want that to come to the RDC as an RDC member, a piece of equipment for the street department. I can see a planning document, if it's gonna be utilized properly and it's sold.
So then leave the hot box in, well, leave them both in for now, and then, 'cause those were in what?
Is that an upgrade or a new piece of equipment?
The, it's, it's brand new, the one they have now, he said, is extremely dangerous.
Elite.
That thing's been around for years.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it sparks and.
And then there was also a revenue investment, right, you guys, uh?
A what?
Um, was there something, a piece of revenue we talked about that you guys didn't put in, that we agreed should, fire contracts?
The fire contracts, she changed.
Okay.
Do you know what the pool was this year?
What it was as far, the revenues?
No.
I, I can find out, you want me to send you that?
Oh, what about, uh, Paul Phillips?
Oh, yeah, what about Paul Phillips?
Uh, I just, we can afford it.
I would agree with Joe on that.
We should stay where we're at.
I don't think we can afford it either.
So what are you thinking?
I'm gonna go sign, have her go in front of the opiate, uh, money committee, and see what she can do there.
So what are you leaving in the budget for them? Right now, it's sixty-five, you're taking it down.
We should do twenty.
She put sixty-five in.
I put sixty-five, 'cause I swore that's what she told me, but.
Well.
But then today, she said a hundred.
The, the budget said sixty-five.
I, I don't think, that's still a lot of money, I think fifty at the most, I would.
We gave forty-five last year. We gave twenty-five.
Twenty.
Twenty-five.
We gave, well, but we added.
Oh, was that Main Street, Main Street's thirty?
The opioid. Wait, is that what you're talking about? The transportation?
They, they were in at twenty last year, and it was increased to sixty-five in this current budget. Do you want, what number do you wanna plug in there instead of sixty-five?
Last year's number, if we can.
So down to twenty?
Yes, you guys.
Here's the thing.
I know we need it, but at the same time.
We have to have public transportation, but then, and I'm not saying this in a bad way, but it's really hard for us to support it to that extent, I feel like, I don't know.
I, I don't see where we'd do more than double what we normally do, and that's a gift, considering the kind of cuts we're looking to make out of this budget. I mean, you put sixty-five in there, but that doesn't mean that we have to honor that.
No, no, I thought she wanted sixty-five, but then she said a hundred today, so then I.
I think she knew that we were not going to be able to achieve that.
I don't want this to come out in a bad way, but it doesn't seem like there's a ton of fundraising efforts.
That's just what, okay, that's what I was, yeah.
And I wondered if, and I don't, somebody can comment on Facebook or YouTube, I don't, I mean, but they're doing a fair box, and then they're, like, I mean, like she says, you know, we're taking people to get their cigarettes, and, you know, if you're taking a ton of people to NHK, then have NHK give a gift, so your employees are getting out there.
Exactly, they, they've got records of where they took everybody, call, you know, contact Walmart, said, we brought eight-hundred-and-seventy-three people to Walmart this year.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you want their business, you could.
Yeah.
And you know, people are going to use that in place of a taxi service or some other thing, because.
It's all a good little donation, I mean, Uber's not, the taxis in town are.
How much is a taxi?
I've thought about that.
Yeah, they can take a taxi for what?
And, and I know, there's a lot of people, this really is necessary, and, and I feel that, I feel the draw that that is a municipal obligation, that we should be providing that, uh, but.
I'm fine if you can't afford the donation to go to your mental health counselor, or your doctor, if you're going to the gas station and get your cigarettes.
Work with them on, on other kind of funding, then, get, get some, some.
I hope you drove yourself.
So I heard twenty from this side of the room, and forty from this side of the room, I just want to give them a number to settle on, so they can run that scenario for us.
The fact of the matter is, it has been the same amount for a lot of years, so with all other expenses going up, some increase is reasonable.
Yeah.
So would you guys say forty?
I would say max forty.
Yeah, forty.
So change the sixty-five to forty, okay, thank you for that clarification.
And I think we'll have to at some point talk to her about that.
I couldn't believe she said, taking people to gas stations for cigarettes, I couldn't believe she said that.
And, and just what donation?
Yeah. I'm sorry, but, no.
When we, when we finish here, I will run up and get, and email you pool revenues, or if you want to stick around for a minute, I can run up and get it.
I don't know if I'd feel right. One of the things we might encourage her, though, is if she does other fundraising, she said this fundraising, we don't get matching for, if they could figure out how that fundraising comes to the city, then the city funnels it then, and then they can get the matching because it came from the city. Maybe, maybe work with her on some of those kind of arrangements, you know?
I'm not, I'm like Steve, I, I think it's necessary, but I, you know.
Yeah.
Are we calling, are we calling the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
An unofficial meeting. A hearing. Well, I will see you guys tomorrow.
Okay.
Everybody have a great evening.
Eleven, right?
We see you first.
Thanks for the warning.